It means war. And I'm guessing when they're vertical that they do not. And so I'm wondering if anybody else has heard that, if that's reputable. And we seriously said do some more investigation into it. And if we've hung it the wrong way, I would recommend that we resolve that.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Gary. That's in fact correct. This protocol here was done well intentioned and innocently. Found out about it in the course of time. And in fact, I just had a discussion with City Administrator Gelder about it. That the opportunity to refashion the shadow box such that then it could be appropriately vertically oriented rather than horizontal. When it's, you know, it'll take a month or something, I'm sure to work that out. Mayor?
Yeah, it was done. We were trying to honor them for being here during the ribbon cutting at the city hall. And we, you know, made an error and put it the wrong way. It's been that way since we opened the city hall. The intention inside that box is actually pieces from the ribbon cutting of the city hall. There's an agenda for the event. And I think there's a piece of ribbon from the ribbon cutting. There's some other things in that box. But it was, the intention was kind, okay? So.
We should fix.
Yeah. The shadow box cost $1,200. It wasn't, it wasn't cheap. So anyway, but I'm all for fixing it. That's a great idea. Any other further comments from the council? I have a couple other things I'd like to just say really quickly, kind of some announcements. Saturday is daffodil day. Okay, nine o'clock, the garage. We're handing out daffodil bulbs to plant throughout the city of Paulsbow. And I can't remember, is this the 13th year, the 14th, maybe even the 15th year? We've planted daffodils throughout our city and our public right of way. So come on down Saturday morning, nine o'clock parking garage. And you can take some daffodil bulbs and plant them in the community. I don't see Jeff here right now, but if you have any questions, just shoot us an email. But I really want to remind everybody. And then, of course, November 11th is Veterans Day. And we're having a really big parade down here. And I'm, I hope you'll all be there. It's, it's turned into a very remarkable tradition, like within two years. It's a beautiful thing to do. So come, come join the parade. And I think that's all I have right now. So let's move on with our agenda, which is board and commission reports and outside agency reports. Mr. Stern, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. The Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council met yesterday, November 4. You were unable to make it due to family circumstances. So we called on alternate member Gary McVeigh, who attended his first full formal board meeting. And so I'll call on him to help me supplement the report I have. But what's relevant for the city council? Number one, the county seems to be calling on a review of the due structure and membership in light of both votes and amount associated with that. And of course, we know the county is facing budget stringencies at this time. So they're also wanting mayor to look at possibly how the votes are allocated on the board in that regard. We also, I was able to bring up putting on the KRCC agenda for the legislative dinner, which I'll emphasize in a moment, derelict vessels. There were some misunderstanding, did we mean money? That Mayor Patonsu pursued already a couple of years ago. And we reiterated that what we're really seeking, as the police chief knows, is a redefinition of what is a derelict vessel, so that we're able to address them more timely and more specifically. And so that will be expanded on. Then the legislative dinner, do you have the date and time for that, city clerk, to remind our colleagues? Gary, do you have that handy? It's next week.
It's Thursday, the 13th.
Thursday, the 13th, and that's going to be at Kitsap Golf and Country Club. And so I think a couple of us are signed up. And any more who would wish to attend? We have a pretty good response of our 23rd, 35th, and 26th delegations showing up to address that. And then lastly, just to point out what has already been on the agenda, the countywide centers, the adoption, city of Paulsbow's the 305 corridor. But also under candidate countywide centers, it's downtown Paulsbow slash highway 305. Do you want to expand on that, Mayor? The difference?
The center qualifications are the way that we achieve not as much state, but federal funding through PSRC. We have to have certain levels of density in order to get federal funds for our transportation infrastructure. And that's the main source of money for a lot of our major road improvements, like the Johnson Parkway, for instance. That's almost all PSRC money. So it's kind of important to make sure that those centers are taken care of because that's how we get the funds effectively.
And Councilman McVeigh, would you help me out with anything supplemental?
I think you've covered it pretty well, Councilmember Stern. I can't think of anything you left out. So thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I attended two meetings on Tuesday, which is Tuesday? Yeah, anyway, Super Tuesday. The first was public health, public health district meeting met. And frankly, I'm going to be a little, how should we say, abrupt. We have a real crisis facing us with food shortages for SNAP and our most vulnerable populations. And I pushed the health district and I said, what's the plan? You know, this is a public health, what's the plan? And, you know, the public health doesn't have a plan. And I'm, you know, I'm really frustrated sometimes with that organization that, that they're not seeing what's coming. They're only doing what they have done in the past. And that really kind of bothers me. So I just want to, I, I think we need to have a plan if the SNAP benefits aren't turned on. And I wrote an email to City Administrator Gelder and also to Kim Hendrickson about this, that, you know, if we don't get those food subsidies turned back on, people are going to need help. And so you need to be aware of that. The other one was Kitsap Transit and massive budget. You know, Kitsap Transit is, is big numbers. And Paul Skinner's there is their finance director, really smart guy, knows what he's doing. Transit's doing well. The big kind of thing out in the future that we're going to have to worry about with transit is we do not have a funding source to replace the fast ferries. We don't. And I've been saying this for the better part of two years. How are we going to come up? Because they're going to, we're going to burn them up. Okay, they're, they, they're small lightweight vessels and, and they're breaking quite frequently now. They don't have a long life expectancy. And we do not have a guaranteed funding source to replace those vessels. Paul Skinner's mentioned it in his budget presentation, and I've been saying this for two years. So that's a big kind of thing hanging out there that everybody needs to be aware of. Go ahead.
Is there any discussion within PSRC at some point of, since that's, a lot of that is connecting Kitsap to King County? That some funding comes from King County to support that system? I know it's the Kitsap Transit system, but it's connecting Kitsap to King. So it, it, sometimes I feel a little bit like, you know, where, where's King's contribution to that system? When they're certainly benefiting from it.
I, you know, I don't know how much they benefit. They, they don't even have, we're such a small population compared to them. I'm not so sure. But anyway, other than that, they were great. They were great meetings. So I was being contrarian a little bit yesterday. But these things, these, these are hard conversations and they need to be, this is millions of dollars. Who's going to pay for them? Where are we going to get the money? So, okay, with that, city administrator and department head comments, go ahead, Rob.
Good evening, Councilwoman Mayor. Thank you. Just wanted to share a few items and updates this evening. One of those is, because I know our staff are modest and they won't necessarily pat themselves on the back. But as you will see in item 9A this evening, before you, for consideration, is an amendment to the ILA with a KPFD. And I have to give out shouts and kudos to Diane Lenius, who has done a phenomenal job of creating and maintaining a very, very strong working relationship with the KPFD, such that they have agreed to invest a little bit more in the PERC project, which is, is pretty darn awesome, which inadvertently increases our commitment and obligation to that project as well. But those things don't happen without relationships. I just want to thank Diane publicly for that. And then also had the opportunity last week to participate in the better part of two days of all things ERP, where our software consultants who are helping us to divide, kind of define the system requirements for the, the future ERP and definitely the RFP, the request for proposal that will be going out on the streets in about another month or so. But, you know, that wouldn't have happened either without Debbie's involvement and stewardship and scheduling of all of the folks that came into those meetings. Because I have to tell you, if there was not one other time, I learned so much than just the processes that your staff go through and the number of workarounds that are required. It was just eye opening. So kudos and thank you for that as well. It's going to be an awesome that we can sort of make that leap forward out of a 20-year-old system into something that will actually be able to meet our needs going forward. One other thing too, is that as we've continued to do our, our migration to the government cloud versus a commercial cloud, we're discovering that it's going to require a little bit more investment. So it's, it's probably about an additional $62,000 to actually make that transition happen. But what we will be doing is incorporating, it's going to cross years. So some of that will be funded out of this year current budget. Some of it will need to be incorporated into our mid biennial budget adjustment. So that will be taken into account at that point in time. But wanted to give you a heads up. And if there's technical details, I would refer those to, to Brooks. Because I don't have the, that knowledge per se. But, so are there any questions for Brooks on that one?
You guys just make it work, okay?
Oh, we will, definitely will. But it's, it is one of those things when, you know, you, you go down the path of trying to do any type of migration or system improvement. And you realize there are always these different forks in the road. And you try to make the best decision operationally for going forward. And trying to either, one option was trying to maintain a split system that what's not going to get us the ultimate gains that we really wanted to do in this migration. So, and that we need to have for security. So.
I'll say one thing. It's basically for security and compliance. Compliance because of the police department and beyond. But security for the city and keeping our data secure so that we can move forward. Because the threat landscape just gets harder and harder every day, as you know.
So and a couple of other items, in terms of sort of that call for the need of support of our community who may be impacted by the federal shutdown, we are partnering with Fishline specifically. We will be putting out bins in city hall in other locations so that we will actually collect items. What we're hearing specifically is that the food side is okay. The donation side right now is okay. That can always change. But there are, there are key items that are priorities. So we're trying to make a push for those. They will probably change on a weekly basis. Right now, we're collecting diapers of all sizes. If anyone wants to donate some diapers and bring them in, that would be appreciated. But we are trying to make, bridge that gap for folks that are in need in our community. And then touching base a little bit on the transit piece and that connectivity to King County and what we do. And if I recall from a past life, there is a thing called a UZA, which is basically sort of those zones. It's a formula funding that transit agencies get based on where those, those systems connect. And they were able to receive a bump in their funding because of that connection to Seattle. So I don't know if it's a one for one. It probably never is, but just wanted to let you know. And other than that, that's it for me.
Thanks, Robbs. Who's next?
I just have a couple of quick things. Diane Lenius, Public Works Department. For any of you that might be wandering around at the Waterfront Park, please take a look at the area, the old picnic area down by the port bathrooms. The concrete has been poured, the trees have been removed, and it's actually looking quite nice. There is a centerpiece in the middle that will be installed in December, I believe. We're waiting for some parts and pieces for that, but it's looking very good. I want to let you know that I did have a meeting with the Habitat for Humanity project manager to continue talking with him about the team that would work together on a partnership for the ADU demonstration project at Robb Park. This is something that Heather put together. And as it moves forward closer to construction, our team is picking that up. And we do have a draft MOU circulating. We also have a draft construction contract. They have some great ideas, including having West Sound Tech construct the panels for the little house, which would be super awesome. And they have had one executive board meeting and the conversation was very promising. So I anticipate that sometime in December, we'll be bringing forward some more details for council to look at, which is pretty exciting. We also met with WashDOT to talk about the Fish Passage projects. And they have agreed to have their contractor Keywood and the Fish Passage expert from WashDOT come and share with council an update on those projects, which will primarily happen on Bond Road and in the area surrounding the city. Not directly in the city, but obviously the traffic detours will be taking the county roads and maybe some shortcuts during the, through the city over the next couple of years as they do those projects. So we'll get that scheduled if there's time in December. If not December, that will be in January. I think those are the main things for, for right now. There's a lot going on. Weather has shifted. It's, you know, it's dark out. And so I just would like to say be careful for those who are out there driving. And this year, the storm water's been tested already in terms of erosion control. And the contractors and our contractor for our big project have been doing a good job considering how much rainfall that we've had.
Hey, Chief. First of all, how was Halloween?
Halloween was not bad.
Good.
Yeah, it was good. And I just wanted to highlight a program that was written about. Councilman McVeigh forwarded the article, I think maybe you all have seen it. But we're starting a program in the police department in cooperation with the prosecutor's office of the county and North Kitsap Recovery Resource Center. That is, we're calling it pre-arrest diversion. And it gives our officers another tool to interact with folks and an opportunity, if the officers think it's appropriate at their discretion with certain parameters in place, to offer folks a chance to become a member at the resource center rather than being arrested for a low-level misdemeanor crime. We don't know exactly how this will all work. We're going to measure this pretty closely and we'll follow it pretty closely. It's a first attempt in the county. But we think it really gives us a chance to introduce people who are struggling with folks that can help them. And there still will be an accountability element. There's a timeframe that folks will need to check in at the center. If they fail to check in at the center, they can still be charged with that low-level misdemeanor crime. So we're hoping that this works in a way that's impactful, especially first-time offenders. That, that's where we think we'll make a difference. So just wanted you to be aware of it. We'll bring details as the program develops and we put it in place. We think by the end of the month, it'll be up and running. And we'll have some metrics by the end of the year, January.
Thanks, Chief. Any other? I see Parks and Rec headed our directions.
Hello, Chris Goodfellow. I'm with the Parks and Recreation. Jeff is at the Washington Recreation and Parks Association Board Meeting this evening. That's why he couldn't be here. And we did have a really busy weekend and I just wanted to update everybody on what happened. Friday, Halloween, we had our annual spooktacular. We had almost 400 families come through our building. We gave out 120 little cards for preschoolers to participate in some fun programs. And then Saturday was salmon tours. It was a kind of wet, soggy salmon tours, but it was still fun nonetheless. And Rachel said there was about 200 people there. I did check with her and daffodil days is this Saturday. It's the 13th annual one, she checked. So, yep, 13. So she'll be here in the parking garage with daffodils to hand out. And when you're done planting there, if you want to help plant for our pollinators project, they will be planting from nine to noon over in American Legion Park as well. So, yeah, it's been busy, but lots of fun.
Thanks, Chris. Anybody else? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody jumping up. So we're going to continue on with our agenda. The next is our consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the city council for reading and study and are considered to be routine. We have items eight A through C.
And Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items eight A through C.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any conversation at all? Seeing and hearing none. Mr. Noel.
Noel, aye.
Tabor, aye.
Stern, aye.
Eckerd, aye.
McVeigh, aye.
Lived, aye.
Thank you, council. Now on to the business agenda. The first is 9A and ILA Amendment One with the KPFD for the PERC project. This is Diane. Go ahead, Diane.
Certainly. I have no presentation tonight. I think everyone here is familiar with the PERC project. Our intent is to advertise the project in January of this year and award by March. We are fortunate to have been able to receive some additional funding for the project from the KPFD, and that is $2.8 million. And so what you have in front of you is an amendment to our ILA, which increases the contribution from the KPFD by $2.8 million. Just a quick reminder, the KPFD is providing 1.5 million for design and then almost $10 million for construction. And the city provides almost $6 million for construction. Plus, we also purchased a parcel. The split is 67%, 33%. And 67% is the maximum that they can provide on a project. This allows us to proceed forward. And we plan to bid the project with some alternates and build as much as we can. I do have in mind a presentation on the project in December after we get the next round of submittals and the next round of cost estimate from our architect, which is AHBL. If you have any questions about the ILA, I'm happy to answer them. The city does carry the bond and the PFD pays back their share and we pay back our share. One thing that's a little bit confusing in the packet that I gave you is we did talk to the bond experts and they provided some numbers on the financing costs. So we went ahead and clarified the financing cost or estimated fee to finance in the ILA in addition to normal design and construction costs. So, thank you.
This is a big moment. Questions for Diane? Go ahead, Gary.
Thank you, Mayor. Diane, thank you and others for your good work on this. It is wonderful news. And I did note in the, our advanced packet that as part of the ILA, there's an agreement to extend the construction award contract to March 31st. We, I'm assuming we anticipate no problem with meeting that deadline. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's consistent with our current schedule.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Any further questions for Diane? When did we start this? 2018?
It's been a while.
I think it's, I think, I want to say 2018, maybe 2017.
Yeah.
We started working on this. So this has been gone, going for a very, very long time. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Move to approve ILA Amendment Number One with the KPFD for the PERC project and authorize the mayor to sign the ILA amendment on behalf of the city.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the ILA for the, with the PFD. Any further questions? Seeing and hearing none. Mr. Noel.
Noel, aye.
Tabor, aye.
Stern, aye.
Eckerd, aye.
McVeigh, aye.
Lived, aye.
Yay. Thank you very much, council. That's very good news. Okay, on to item 9B, ordinance number 202517, third quarter budget amendments. And this is Deb Boor and Larissa Campbell.
Good evening. There is no presentation included in your packet. Is the ordinance amending the budget at fund level and incorporates all of the budget amendments passed in the third quarter? And at this point, we do have to, since it's a public budget, we have to open it up for public comments.
Okay, this is our quarterly budget amendment. So I am opening it up to public comment. If anyone has any public comment regarding the amendments putting, amendments as presented, please step to the podium. Anyways, three or five minutes? Three minutes? Three minutes to speak. Any public comments about the budget amendments? Seeing and hearing none. Counsel? All good? Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Okay. Move to approve ordinance number 2025-17, an ordinance of the city of Paulsbow, Washington, amending the 2025-2026 biennial budget adopted by ordinance number 2024-19 to revise the revenues and appropriations regarding certain funds and approving an ordinance summary for publication.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further questions or conversations about this? Seeing and hearing none. Mr. Noel.
Noel, aye.
Tabor, aye.
Stern, aye.
Eckerd, aye.
McVeigh, aye.
Lived, aye.
Thank you, council. Now we're moving on to the ordinance number 202518, the 2026 property tax. Go ahead, Deb.
Good evening. We presented this during the revenue public hearing. And this is the resolution to establish the levy that we will pass on to our city assessor's office and allow us to cut property taxes in 2026. It has been reviewed by both the county assessor's office as well as our city attorney and meets the legal obligations in order to levy those funds.
Any questions for Deb? This isn't changing any levy rates or anything. This is just the standard thing that we have always done, correct?
Correct. It's, it's allowing us to levy up to that 1% above the highest allowed levy and additional funds due to new construction.
Okay. All right. Questions for Deb? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
I'll do this one too. Okay? Move to approve ordinance number 2025-18, an ordinance of the city of Paulsbow, Washington, levying the general taxes for the city of Paulsbow for the fiscal year commencing January 1, 2026, on all property, both real and personal in said city, which is subjected to taxation for the purpose of providing sufficient revenue to carry on the several departments of said city for the ensuing year as required by law and approving an ordinance summary for publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the ordinance number 202518, the 2026 property tax. Any questions or comments? Mr. Eckerd.
Yeah, I talked with Deb about this a little bit. I understand why we do this and I understand why we've always done it. But I'm, and I understand we have expenses that go up. But I'm a little concerned about the constant increase in property tax. And we're not just the only ones. All the taxing districts are doing it. And we even have later in our presentation, a number highlighting how many of our citizens are seniors on fixed incomes, where this kind of tax hits hard. And so I think attempting to raise our property tax as a source of potential additional revenue, I think is the wrong source. I prefer to see us taxing in another way. We're going to talk about more of this later tonight. And I think, I think we need to do this differently. I think at this point, property tax is not the place to do it.
Go ahead.
I appreciate Councilman Eckerd's concerns. I'm sure we all echo that, Mayor, with inflation and cost and the entire economic aspect. If I could call on Debbie Boor, our finance director, to review or the city administrator. If I could call on Debbie Boor, our Finance Director, to review or the city administrator, the senior low income exemptions that exist on property tax?
I would actually have to reach out to the assessor's office. There's an application process that they go through to, to get that reduced property tax, but the city does not, does not participate or facilitate that. So I do not know all of the restrictions on it.
So it's, it is a program that was established by the state legislature that has been amended over the years. It's income qualified, so they have a whole process, very similar to when you file your federal taxes and you get certain deductions, et cetera. And they have to be able to kind of address some of the, the growth in assessed valuation over the past few years. That threshold has continued to raise. Last I knew it was 40,000, but I think it may be even up towards 50,000 at this point in time for senior exemptions.
60.
60 now.
Well, 65.
I'm on the King County website that has a high level overview of property tax exemptions. It's, must be at least 61 by December 31st of the previous year. Maximum house, oh, sorry, the maximum household income is 65.
65.
And the exemption amount is, doesn't say, of course. So maybe it is still.
I think the best thing is if you have questions or concerns about this, reach out to us here in city government and we can help you to see if you qualify for, for those exemptions. We'd be more than happy to do that.
I think there's also some exemptions for veterans with certain disability rating or higher as well.
So if you have questions, make sure to reach out. I think it's the best.
We can, you can reach out to us, but practically, we would be referring you, anyone who's interested to the county assessor's office because they manage that process.
Okay. All right. So to make it easier, reach out to the county assessor's office. Okay. So we do have a motion in a second on the table, if I'm not mistaken, correct? Is there any further questions or conversations about this? Seeing and hearing none. Mr. Noel.
Noel, aye.
Tabor, aye.
Stern, aye.
Eckerd, no.
McVay, aye.
Lived, aye.
All right. Thank you, Council. And that is the end of our workshop agenda. Do you want to take a 10-minute break? Or 10 minutes? Okay, so we will rejoin at 5:50. Okay, folks, you want to, let's re-get this meeting going again. The first thing on our workshop agenda this evening is the 2025 Critical Area Ordinance Update. And this is Nicole Coman. Nicole?
Okay, good evening. Sorry, you guys haven't been in a couple months and feels like things have shifted a little bit. So. Yeah, so it was a little thrown, but let's go ahead and get started. It's good to see you all again, Council and Mayor. I'm here tonight to present the 2025 Critical Areas Ordinance Update Phase One, and I'll discuss why Phase One in a few slides. Oh, my gosh. It's been a minute. Yeah, thank you. Sorry about that. What happens when you don't come for a month or two? I'm going to start again. 2025 Critical Areas Ordinance Update Phase One. Of note is that this is the last piece of the comprehensive plan update, so it is still the comprehensive plan update. I'm sorry to tell you. I know you just love hearing about it some more, but this is the last piece of it that's required by the Growth Management Act. So once we finish with the critical areas ordinance, we are officially done with the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update. And I am more excited than you probably. So I will quickly go over the, what are critical areas? I won't belabor that. Why do we regulate them? Best available science. Talked about why we're doing this as a phased approach, a little bit about the required amendments, and quickly, next steps. I know you have a large agenda tonight, so I don't want to take too much of your time. Understanding what our critical areas are, I'll go over each of them. Wetlands are areas that are frequently or permanently saturated with water, you know, pretty self-explanatory. We have all updated maps for our critical areas as you guys already adopted in June with the comprehensive plan update. And what the mapping shows is that when we have hydroic soils, they're shown in green. Those are areas that could be wetlands, but we don't know until a project comes through and a private property is required to delineate. When we do have a project- When we do have a project come through and those wetlands are delineated, they are represented in the blue on the map, so. But this is an advisory map to help staff understand where we might have concerns. Fish and Wildlife Habitat Conservation Areas, these are commonly our streams and then also some of our shoreline areas, dealing with habitat for sandlands, things along our shoreline. I'll get a little bit more into this because this is where we have more of our significant changes with this update. But this is where you're looking at our streams and creeks in city limits. Our critical aquifer recharge areas are, it's our aquifer areas of concern. So ultimately, this is based on a vulnerability assessment. So it's when staff looks at a map such as this, we are looking at the use that's being proposed on top and whether or not that would be of concern such as a gas station or something like that. If it's a single-family home, it doesn't raise alarms, but if it is something in like a business park or industrial area that might cause contamination, this map helps us understand where that might be of concern.
Just on the map, I had, sorry, I've seen this before, I noticed you've included the UGAs. Does the county also, where's the overlap? Is it our city boundaries or is it the UGA line? Where's the overlap between this part and what the counties does?
Absolutely. So the county updated their critical ordinance last year or earlier this year as well. Currently, per the inter-local agreement, critical areas are managed through the city. It's our critical areas that they're permitting. Yeah, it's us. We're hoping to change that to be our critical areas are permitting in the future. Yeah. The fourth one is geologically hazardous areas, which are self-explanatory in many ways, areas of steep slope. You primarily see those along our ridge lines on Tenth Avenue and up above around Fourth. But there's also some areas of downtown that are considered potentially geohazardous areas, including where Eliason was built and Wervanahimer. And so for a project like that, we required a geotech memo, not necessarily a full report, to clarify that it's not an area of concern.
Did you consult with LiDAR imaging before, when you did this?
For the mapping, yes. Yeah, okay. Yeah, so Tiffany Simmons and our department updated all of our maps with the Critical, with the Comprehensive Plan Update. So, but if there's a project that comes in, in a geologically hazardous area, is a potentially, again, it's an advisory map, then we require a full geotechnical report that gets reviewed, which is pretty standard for building construction anyway, so it's not anything too different, of course.
I note the elevations range from sea level to 444 feet, 440 feet in the city of Paulsbow. Where is that 440 feet?
You've asked me a question that I cannot answer.
Okay. That's just, that's, that's, that's higher than I would have guessed, and I was just trying to figure out where that is.
I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's Rob or if it's over by.
I would guess, that'd be my guess, kind of Crystal View, Rob, Meredith Heights, but I don't know exactly, but now I want to know.
Probably not really important, but I just, thank you.
It's a good question. I don't like being stumped, but good question. I just don't think, um, frequently flooded areas is our fifth critical area, and it's unique in that, as you can see by the map example, it's not a city map, it's a FEMA map at the federal level, and it's managed at the federal level by FEMA in terms of where those potentially flooded areas are. There's only a few in-city limits, and this is at the corner, this is the bond and SR 305 intersection, where Dogfish Creek goes into Fish Park and then into the bay. And then this critical area is specifically managed by our floodplain manager, which is in our engineering department. So it's our code, but really it's something that our engineering department deals with primarily.
Wouldn't you know, the worst intersection in the entire city is right in the middle of a flood.
Yeah, yeah. Perfectly designed location.
Yeah, is this gonna impact when the county goes to get rid of that property? Is this gonna have a significant impact on its usage?
It probably won't have a significant impact, but they will have to jump through a few more hoops. Yeah, so whoever buys it and moves forward will have to do some sort of reporting. Yeah. Okay, so those are our five critical areas. Why are we here? Again, under Washington state law, all cities are required, and counties are required to develop policies and developing regulations to protect the functions and values of critical areas, using best available science, which I'll briefly touch on in a second, and we're required to update every 10 years. It's our opportunity to make sure we're consistent with federal and state policies and that incorporate any new advancements in environmental conservation and natural hazards. Our first Critical Areas Ordinance was passed in 2007, and the last update was in 2017, just as I started with the city of Paulsbow. I remember Carla working on it just as I was getting going. So.
Thank you, Becky. I bring this up periodically whenever we have this review, going all the way back to 2007. And that's the contradiction in, I believe, is the DNR, where it has to do with critical area shoreline and creek, where one code says to maintain for public access, and the other allows not one to manage the vegetation, such that alders, which are, we sometimes refer to as weed trees, can overtake specifically along the bay, where people like to be able to see the bay, but over time it blocks their access. So those seem two contradictory objectives written into the code. So I guess I'm just seeking a personal perspective and opinion from a professional.
Well, when it comes to trees, that's a big question, because trees also create, there's other concerns with trees in terms of geologically hazardous areas, which are some of our shorelines. And so our shoreline master program is far more restrictive than the Critical Areas Ordinance, which is very restrictive to begin with. So that is what's managing those alders or trees within the shoreline jurisdiction, and to remove them is difficult, I'll say that.
So Nicole, is there a differentiation between native growth and some of these invasive species?
Not when it comes to trees necessarily, when it comes to blackberries and things like that. But when it comes to trees, we don't have that same ability to kind of say yes or no to invasives.
Go ahead.
Do we have a way to square circles when, as mentioned, when contradictions arise like from a GMA versus, you know, the growth, you know, the CAO versus another, you know, mandate? And then there's, you know, contradictions in between those different mandates. Do we have a way to square those circles?
Ultimately, the most restrictive shall apply. In all, in all cases, when I'm dealing with critical areas or shoreline or zoning, the most restrictive regulation applies, and that is almost always shoreline.
You don't want to cut trees down in the shoreline because the shoreline will move if you cut them down.
Yeah, but is there opportunities for restoration? Let's remove the trees that don't provide a lot of value, and that just comes down to the ability to fund and do that kind of work in our shoreline area. But it's possible to do replacement and restoration, we just have to have the ability to do it. So, absolutely.
The tree lines, you know, over and over, it, the alders, the cottonwoods, all of those, okay? But those root structures are keeping that bank there, and I mean, you, you don't want to cut them down. In fact, you really need to plant more, but, you know, it's the trade-off.
But ultimately, there won't be public access in the commonly understood meaning of the word.
Nope, there will not be public access.
It's complicated, unfortunately, when it comes to the shoreline. And you've thrown all the other layers, and it gets even a little more complicated. But I'll be back with the shoreline stuff in a few years, and we'll talk about that. So in regards to best available science, this is a requirement of the RCW and the WAC that jurisdictions must demonstrate that best available science has been considered when creating our CAO and, and our approach to regulating the critical areas. We have to basically show our work and show why we're recommending what we are. So we had a best available science report completed by our third-party environmental consultant, who we use for a lot of other things as well, and that's available on our website. You're welcome to look at it, but it's basically a report that tells us what our, what our wetland buffer should be, what our stream buffer should be, and that's based on the science. And what's new this year is that the Department of Fish and Wildlife put out recommendations for the first time ever. So there's been years and years planners asking for some guidance from the Department of Fish and Wildlife for Fish and Wildlife Habitat Conservation Areas, and we finally got it. Good or bad, we finally got it, but we've had guidance on wetlands since the early aughts or even the 90s, perhaps, we've had that guidance for years and years, and it's been updated multiple times. So our environmental consultant takes these science reports and recommendations and then prepares our best available science report specific to Paulsbow. Another key component of the Critical Areas Ordinance is no net loss of ecological function. So over time, the goal is to not have a net loss of those functions. But it should be noted that the protection does not mean that critical areas will not be impacted because there's opportunities to mitigate, and that's, that's listed in the CAO as well. You could, you start with trying to avoid, then if you can't avoid, you, you do restoration enhancement, and then the final step is replacement of those lost functions and values. And it should be noted that no net loss is measured relative to the current baseline. So it's, it's not like the stormwater manual where they're trying to go back to a certain forested environment that was here 50 years ago. What is the baseline functions today, and you have to maintain that moving forward. So. So the CAO is a sum of all of its parts. This is just a piece of it, and you've already done a good chunk of that work. The goals and policies were adopted in the Natural Environment Chapter in June, when you adopted the Comprehensive Plan. Again, those maps were also included in the Comprehensive Plan. This is the regulation document, so Chapter 1620. And then we have application requirements in Title 19 that we're not proposing to amend. And then related to Councilmember Stern's comment, there is the correlation with the shoreline jurisdiction, and specifically wetlands located within the shoreline jurisdiction, which is 200 feet of the ordinary high watermark, are regulated by those short, by the shoreline master program currently. That might change next time around, but currently, so.
One more stab, Nicole. Is there anything we could do with our municipal authority to move the needle either way on these prescriptions? Or do we have to adopt them whole?
So, they are, they are state mandates. You gotta remember that the Shoreline Management Act started when a whole bunch of wonderful guys started doing development out on Alki, and they were taking a little postage stamp piece of land and then putting a dock all the way out into Puget Sound. And they did the same thing on, in Lake Washington. And so they had a postage stamp this big, and then this thing that went out, and they sold apartments. And during the Christmas time, when I was a young girl, people got EO'd, they were so angry about this. There was a whole referendum, signatures got, and literally the people of the state of Washington said, "We don't want you messing with our shorelines," and that's when it started. It predates, it's the first real environmental legislation that was passed in the state of Washington. And it's almost, what, 40 years old?
1972?
72.
72.
So.
It's been a minute. Yeah, but one thing to point out is, so as a jurisdiction, we can, we can wait, we can go away from some of the strict standards, but our best available science report has to justify why, and that is a hard benchmark to meet, especially as a smaller jurisdiction, being able to do that.
So if we designated what we consider to be public access or public view or public utility, and then within those little corridors, created some vegetation management plan, could that conceivably work?
Good, absolutely. Yeah, and, and one of the tenants of the shoreline master program is a requirement for public access. What that public access means could be visual as well, it doesn't necessarily have to mean physical access to the shoreline. So some of that is a visual, the ability for the community to view the shoreline. So.
In all seriousness, if you want to know what we were facing back then, because I remember when this happened. When you're driving down I-5 and you look over the University of Washington, you can see condominium buildings that were created this way, the same way out at Alki. They were literally going to build into our public waterways. And people got mad and said, "You're not doing that here." So this was, this was a citizen initiative that created the shoreline management.
Voted on by the state. Yeah. So, but I think this ties into Councilmember Stern, some of your concern is why we're doing it as a phased approach. One is our current workload and other projects we're trying to work on. Heather and I have a lot of thoughts about how we could improve the Critical Areas Ordinance, make it more user-friendly, make it more, there's just, there's certain pieces that we'd like to alter, but those are discretionary amendments that are going to require a lot more coordination with the Department of Ecology and Department of Fish and Wildlife, and a lot of back and forth. So what we, what we wanted to do was focus first on the required amendments per the updates to the state law and the best available science, and that's what we're bringing forward in Phase One, is what is required. And then Phase Two are the discretionary amendments that we are hoping, I didn't update this slide, I apologize, but we're hoping to be bringing forward in 20, early 2026, but it's likely going to be more like spring. But a piece of that is, one of the elements of the Critical Areas Ordinance that can be frustrating is that the level of environmental reporting is the same, whether you're doing a 100-lot subdivision or an ADU. That doesn't seem quite equitable. So if we want to encourage ADUs, for example, just an example, is there an opportunity for, for us to adopt prescription, prescriptive mitigation, so that if you bring in a project that has a certain square footage impact, do we have already adopted standards that you could impact that critical area based on such, such, and such? So we're working, we use some of our professional develop, our professional services budget to work on what would be very new to any jurisdiction in the state of Washington for something like that. So that's just a piece that we'd like to bring forward, but it'll be next year because it just requires a lot more thought and time. But we feel like it's, it's something that's important for our community to say, if you're a big developer, it's no big deal, this is just part, and then you pass it on to the homeowner as a cost of construction. But if you're someone who simply wants to do an ADU for, you know, multi-generational housing, you still have to do the same level of reporting, and it's very expensive. So. So that's just a piece of why we opted to bring it in as two phases.
One of the other things that, I cut my political teeth on the Critical Area Ordinance when I first came into the city of Paulsbow. And at the time when I first got involved, there were only 25 feet from the creek line. 25 feet was all, you could build up to 25 feet next to our creeks. For no reason, that's such, so idiotic for flooding. I mean, we just saw what happened in poor Texas. I mean, a lot of these critical area buffers, yes, are environmental concerns, but they're also public safety concerns.
Absolutely.
And so, I mean, you do not want to build houses on unstable geological structures. And so, you know, don't, don't forget that it's, this is all not just about being green. This is also about being safe and building great communities. So, go ahead, Rick.
It seems that the last piece you mentioned, it, it would be one of the ways that we would be able to encourage current, current homeowners, especially in the shoreline, to do improvements to the existing property in ways rather than sell to a developer who's going to develop it. Now, and, you know, within the rules, but in a way that's going to change the character. I mean, that's kind of what I'm here, like, it encourages this. We're not stagnating, we're allowing some growth, but we're doing it in a way that preserves what we want. First, the pressure is so great, like you said, big developers can absorb it, so folks are just gonna say, "I'll just sell."
There, there definitely could be a piece of that, and again, just clarifying that this isn't the shoreline code. But yeah, there are pieces of that, that, so the example that I have is a very large property in Old Town. These folks bought the property only a few years ago, beautiful piece of property, all they want to do is do an ADU, and their entire property is within a stream buffer. The cost to do that reporting is astronomical for just a single-family homeowner. So it's not that we want to say, "No, no big deal, just go," you know, we don't, you know, we don't care if you do that to the environment, that's not it. We just want the same opportunity to, to a small property owner to have the same opportunity as someone who's maybe a larger developer, who can absorb that cost a little bit more. So, but absolutely, I mean, there's pieces, they might even think, "Well, it makes more sense just to sell it," you know, because they, someone else can manage that. So, absolutely. So the required changes, I know you have a big agenda, so I want to keep moving forward. I, I realized that I don't think you got a strike through an underline in your packet. So I apologize for that. Normally I would provide that to you. So I'm gonna run over these, and then we'll talk about next steps based on the fact that you didn't get a strike through an underline in this packet, but. So I have that ready, and I thought I included it in the packet, but I did not apparently. But the required changes and what you'll have in that document is there's some minor updates and definitions. But the required changes and what you'll have in that document is there's some minor updates and definitions and general provisions. In the wetland section, there's some minor updates to the wetland buffer widths and habitat scores. And then a fairly, it looks like a significant update to the mitigation replacement ratios, but it's just, it just looks like significant because of the red line. But the biggest change is to fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas. For one, you'll see a lot of strike through because the Department of Fish and Wildlife would like us, would, would like us to refer to them as riparian management zones. So it's more of a holistic view. So there's a lot of strikeouts just going from buffer to riparian management zone. And then all of the buffer widths for every stream, no matter the type, are a minimum of a hundred feet for all streams. So there's an alternative to that, but the alternative is very complicated. So based on the best available science, you either have to have a minimum of a hundred feet for all streams. Or you can use this thing that is called site potential tree height. So what that means is that based on the type of tree that you have native to your property, that is your buffer width. So if you have a hemlock, it might be 225 foot buffer width. If you have an alder, it might be 125. What is complicated about that and really difficult to administer is that it changes from neighbor to neighbor. So you could come in and we, and then we require you to pay to go out to determine what your buffer width is. So it's an additional cost and step for a property owner, even if you just want to build a deck and, you know, maybe it's in their critical area. And then your neighbor could come in and they have a hundred foot less buffer based on the mapping that is from the Department of Natural Resources. It's extremely complicated. It's brand new. It's, needs a lot of tweaks. So.
Sorry. But also, like, trees can just be super easily cut down. Oops. Developers do it all the time.
Yeah.
Oops, cut it down. Like you can't put, or lop off that.
Well, they would have to be based on the soil type, so the type of tree that could exist on your property. And what is the fall, the fall length? It's, it's a wormhole. You don't want to go down, trust me. But that is the alternative. So in lieu of that, after I went through and mapped every single piece of our stream and realized it was insane, our streams in the city, the alternative is a minimum of a hundred feet on all streams. So that does have an impact to some property owners. It's not, it's not just, you know, a wash. So this is what the amendment looks like in the code that you did not get in your packet, but you'll have in the future. For example, the N S, which is non-fish seasonal. I just want to make sure I got it right. Non-fish seasonal goes from 15 to 75 feet to 100 feet. And then this area here, urban commercial, that's Pauls Bow Village. Primarily, so that goes from 50 feet to 100 feet. That can have some impact, but we also have language in our code that refers to interrupted buffers. So if it's already paved, already interrupted, then the ability to still use your property within that existing interrupted buffer is still there. And Heather and I would like to kind of work on that language even a little bit more with phase two to kind of make it clearer. So, but that's the difference, the, the major change in this, this update. So one of the things we did was we sent postcards to all potentially impacted property owners who may have seen a change. I have heard from two people. I think we sent out over 200 postcards, I think 150 maybe. And the one person specifically just said, okay, none of this seems so bad. I'm fine. So it's something we were concerned with, but we sent, we provided that notice and we really didn't get any sort of major response. We coordinated with the Department of Fish and Wildlife early and got their feedback, Department of Ecology, Department of Natural Resources. You received a comment letter recently this week from Department of Natural Resources asking for additional amendments. Those are recommended, not required, and staff already incorporated what we felt was required and, and right for Pauls Bow. But happy to entertain those if you're interested. The Sequamish Tribe has been engaged in this process. They provided comments during the comprehensive plan update actually for the C A O. And then you received an email from Mr. McCoy earlier this week as well. And his concern was primarily with peer review of environmental reports. And the requirement, so when a project comes in that's, that has a critical area located, they'll submit a report from their environmental consultant. And we have that peer reviewed from our third-party environmental consultant. And I will say that that's something that we consider really important and it does catch a lot of things. And it, it takes the burden off the staff. Me, I'm not an environmental consultant and it stresses me out to try and review those reports and actually say, well, that looks fine. You know, I don't know. So that was his comment, but it's something we can also look at during phase two if, if council is interested. And this was the map that's been on our website since the beginning of this project. And, yeah, so. Those, the green are the ones that are not changing, the red are potential changes that, so property owners could be aware. And then you can click on it and zoom in on your closer and know if you're going to be impacted. So Tiffany Simmons created this as well.
So it seems like the three oh five quarter is probably with the commercial, that's probably the biggest impact it looks like.
It is. And then the headwaters through Wilderness Park. This could potentially have some impact based on if this is developed in the future. But, yeah. So, next steps. I want to understand if you would like me to come back next week for a workshop with the strike through an underline? Or if you're okay with reviewing that prior to the public hearing on the nineteenth? Understanding I completely meant to put that in your packet and forgot somehow. So I just want to understand what you would feel comfortable with.
Do you, do you want to strike? Do you want the, do you want to come back and have another briefing with the, the actual language? Or what would you like, council?
I'd be okay if you just sent us the document.
Okay.
And ask us to reach out to you if we have comments. It does not need to go back into a workshop.
Yeah, easy peasy.
And then just come back with the hearing in two weeks.
Right.
Yeah, just business agenda so we can discuss if we have questions, I think.
Yeah.
From that.
Yeah.
It's not a workshop. That way we can move forward.
Doesn't need to come back to the workshop. We'll put it on the business agenda.
Yeah, just go.
In two weeks for the hearing.
If you just send out the strike tomorrow, ask us if we have any comments.
I will do that. Sounds good. Mr. Stern, you had a question?
Thank you. I'm perfectly good with this, but speaking as one of seven, I would like, if there's ever a capacity within the planning department, to explore that option under state code to maybe look at us working into our codes on top of their codes, designated view areas along shoreline? And could it work in terms of these isolated areas being vegetation management areas?
We do have some language about community views in our shoreline master program. Heather and I can look a little bit more at that. I know our city attorney, when she hears public views and views, she starts to get nervous. So it's something we can evaluate and see how it fits into the shoreline master program a little bit.
Problem is, you don't know what a view is. One person's view is the water, another person's view is their kid's bicycle in the driveway. It's really hard to define it. So.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Great, of course. Happy to see you again.
All right. So thank you, Nicole. Next up is the Bond Rose SR three oh five sewer force main design consultant contract, and this is Charlie. Is it Vinland?
Good evening, council. Sorry about that. So I'm going to present the Bond Road SR three oh five sewer force main extension. We're hiring a design consultant to move this important sewer project forward. Just a little bit of background. This is one of the big sewer upgrades that was identified in our sewer comprehensive plan. It's critical for growth in the west side of Pauls Bow. And we did include it in our sewer C I P. And what we're talking about is the Bond Road lift station. I'll show you on the map here. So just kind of give you guys an idea. All of the west side of Pauls Bow sewer flows to this Bond Road lift station right here. And from there, it's conveyed via Force Main. Out along SR three oh five, it currently stops at the Tolafson intersection, where it enters the gravity central interceptor, which then conveys it along the highway to our discharge point at the Johnson Road metering station, which is where Kitsap County takes ownership of it. And so this pump station is currently under capacity. And as the growth continues, it will need to be expanded. And we have the impellers for the pumps to expand the capacity. But right now, at the central interceptor, if we were to put the bigger impellers on the lift station, it will overwhelm the gravity system there. And so this project kind of puts a parallel pipe in, bypasses that gravity system, and greatly increases our sewer capacity. Any questions on that before I kind of move on to the process?
Gravity isn't always grand.
Huh?
Said gravity isn't always grand.
No, no. So we did a, this is a pretty big project for us. So we didn't want to go just off of our on-call. So we issued an R F Q for consultants in August earlier this year. We received responses from four very qualified firms. We interviewed, you know, reviewed them, interviewed two of the firms and then selected B H C consultants as our, as a design consultant for this project. We then negotiated the scope and budget, which was in the packet. And we're proposing to move that forward. It's a pretty, from a, it's a pretty big project from the design side. There's a lot in there. There's survey coordination, geotech, or coordination with WashDOT. This is on the highway, so there'll be some, some coordination there. The side of the highway is a steep slope, so there's some geotech work. Not going to be a super easy project to do, but definitely necessary. And one of the other things that we're including in there is some odor control. We want them to look at the odor for my sewer at the discharge point because it's getting pretty odorous. And we think this is a good opportunity to address that as well. They're scheduled to work on the design for about the next year. And we are looking to advertise in October and then move into construction in 2027. It's a big project, kind of out there a little ways. As far as the budget goes, we'd anticipated a cost of around 600,000 for the design piece of it. B H C's scope was about 545,000. And I will note that about 20,000 of that is additional geotech work if we decide to go with a trenchless installation option. So we're going to kind of evaluate whether trenchless makes sense for all of it or a portion of it. And that will or, you know, may or may not require the need for additional geotech work. And overall, it's within the budget that we have in our sewer C I P. And with that, I would entertain any questions and we're proposing to move this forward next week on the consent agenda.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Charlie. Couple of questions. Can you talk a little bit more about this trenchless option? I'm assuming we wouldn't have pipes over ground, but if you could talk about that a little bit and then, do we have a a preferred time of year that we might actually do the construction? Given the traffic highway concerns and rainfall, et cetera?
Yeah. So when I say trenchless, we're talking about boring or augering, something like that. And we are, from prior conversations on a different project, but, but you related the utilities with WashDOT right of way. We anticipate them at least raising the question if it's possible to install it trenchless. And because it's a force main, it can be installed relatively shallow. And it doesn't really matter if it goes like this a little bit. It is pumped via pump, and so it can have a little bit of elevation variance. And from a, you know, we also have a, we have another, we have our central interceptor there with manholes. And so that's a potential concern that makes trenchless difficult is because we have to avoid utilities that are in the ground. But it, it may be something that it makes sense to do for a portion of it, or, you know, all of it, or some of it, or none of it. So we're including that kind of high-level evaluation in the in the scope. And based on where that goes, we will, we'll see where it goes.
So you've been in communication with WashDOT. They know that this is all going on, correct?
Yeah, we have a franchise utility. We haven't had a specific project specific to this project conversation with WashDOT yet. But we have a franchise utility with the pipe that's already there. And it's one of the, you know, we wanted to get our hands around it a little bit more. And then we'll engage WashDOT and find out what we need to do to kind of amend our franchise agreement with them. It expires, I think, in 2027, so it's an appropriate time to.
How about that timing question I had, Charlie, in terms of traffic control and?
Yeah. I think it's going to depend upon where the specific pipe and how much of the highway we take up. If we end up needing to take a lane of the highway and install it in the shoulder, I'm presuming it'll end up being primarily night work. The highway wider, the, the highway right of way is wider than the width of the highway. And so if we are able to install part of it in the grassy shoulder off of the highway, that may be something that, you know, doesn't impact traffic. I think doing it in the winter during, you know, the rainfall makes it challenging with the steep slope and the embankment off of the highway. I think doing it in the peak summertime, when traffic's a little bit higher, is also not a great time to do it. It's also not going to be a quick project.
There's no good time to do this.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Mr. Eckert?
Yeah, I would just say, once, once we get to a point where we have probably more detail, we should probably add this to the agendas of both our Bainbridge ad hoc and our Sequamish ad hoc. And at least, and give them as much heads up as we can and consult with them.
Okay. Any more questions? I'm Charlie. Okay, so this is going to be on the business agenda next week?
I think consent agenda.
Consent?
Yeah.
Okay.
You guys are all right with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cool. Well, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Okay, we're now on to the third quarter financial status report. And this is Deb and Larissa.
Now to the fun part of the night. And we get to say the favorite saying that our city administrator experienced in our software interviews. We have a spreadsheet for that. So first up, I believe everybody knows Larissa. She is in the finance department and she is in the role of senior accountant working on the budgets. And so she has prepared the financial status, so I'm going to let her drive and take the role for this.
Good evening, everyone. We'll just jump right into our status report because we have a lot of budget stuff to cover. And the good news is, is this is very much like the last report that I was here in June. So we're right on track. And so third quarter, we're ending September 30th and we are at 76% of expected revenues. So, yes, thank you. Yeah. Yep. And so page one, it starts with our general fund operating revenue and all, all revenue categories are pretty much bottom line as we expect for the quarter. And so just some highlights, we have our variances in red and green that fall within a 15% margin, around that 75%. And then, so within each revenue category, the taxes specifically, some of these are collected on a quarter basis. And since the quarter just ended for this report, September 30th, we'll see those increases on the October report. And then, so. So we'll hop over to page two and that wraps up general fund revenues and so we still have our building permits. Those are still trending higher and those are noted down below. And our perks and rec revenues are also trending well as well from our programs. And then we do have on this page, in the middle section, you'll see the revenues for traffic infractions and traffic camera that we are watching as well. Was there a question? No, okay.
I do want to point out in when we're.
Those are amazing number.
Yeah, when we build our, when we come forward with our amendment, we, you will see revenue. Yeah, when we build our, um, when we come forward with our amendment, we you will see revenue projections increase due to the actuals coming in. Anything else?
All right. Uh, no, I think uh so page three is just an overview of those um budget to actuals, general fund uh revenues. And on the expenditure side, um, overall same uh situation and actually our expenditures are tracking a little less. Um, so that's uh good news there. And there's not too many highlights for expenditures. Uh, just do want to point out um for the general fund overall, uh, there are still some outstanding transfers that haven't been made yet and that is contributing to some of the budget variance.
What's the, what's that uh big glaring red 609% for marine safety? What is that?
Oh, so the expenditures have been exceeded there and uh some of those marine programs, there's some reimbursements coming for some grants.
Okay.
So that should even itself out as those uh grant reimbursements come in.
Okay.
And I think you're seeing a reflection to um as, as you asked the police department to be more active in that marine patrol.
Yes.
You're going to see some related expenditures with that. So they've been much more proactive and you'll see it even next quarter um and probably as the derelict vehicles, they just removed those. So you'll actually see higher numbers coming forward. But it's really proof in the, in the fact that you've asked them to be more active and get out there. So you're spending those dollars.
But some will be covered by grants, we're expecting. Is that right?
The hope, the hope is, the hope is grand. We're planning for um not just in case, but the hope is there. And I think, I think they're pretty um I think they're pretty positive that it'll come in, but we have planned to use savings to remove those derelict vessels if necessary.
All right. Thank you for the extra context.
Um, does not DNR cover some of the removal cost of vessels once a year? And does that get recouped?
Well, I, they have to put into it and and the police department can answer for it more. They are put in to be re- um, to be refunded for those derelict vessels, but there's no guarantee. So the direction was let's get, let's get um proactive and remove those. And if we have to use savings to do that, we do that. So we're, so we plan to use the reserves, but the hopes is the budgets come back and they are definitely going after those funds.
All right. And then, uh, yes, we do have a slight, um, our jail costs are running just a little bit higher uh for this year and that will definitely be looked at as we are adjusting for 2026.
Quick question, if I could, real minor item. About five, six years ago, council released the initiative on a semi municipal cemetery upgrade. Public Works installed water, et cetera, other improvements. How's that working out as far as cost versus what cyclical revenue? Can I say that?
Uh, most, most of the costs that we put out towards the cemetery, there, it's pretty minimal in the, in the scheme of the general fund.
Right.
Um, however, those improvements were made several years ago and I know that um the public works department received a grant to help with some of those markers last year. We bring in the plot sales into our capital fund, so we're building reserves for cemeteries if we have to do some future projects. But what you'll see in the general fund are primarily just maintenance, then mowing and some of the irrigation and that. And and so those improvements have already been made and now it's just moving forward with continuing to maintain.
Kind of treating it like we do our parks, just.
Yes. Pointing out, I just want to point out, under transportation management, you'll see a large variance which was been brought forward before. Keeping in mind that a large portion of that budget is for professional services for projects. And um, one of them is the Eighth Avenue, which most of the work will be done next year, so we will carry that over to next year's budget. And the other portion is the raised grant for the trails and that's federally funded. And we've actually have that in a paths and trails fund um to account for that. So that'll move out of the general fund in the mid-year biennium amendment. Um, but that's why there's such the large variances there. So some of those will be carried over and some of those will be moving to a different program going forward. But otherwise, everything's tracking the way we expected to. So that's the good news. Not a lot of surprises.
Perfect. Oh, yes. Uh, so we'll go to page eight. Yep, and wrap up general fund expenditures.
That's why you want to keep going or going back?
Uh, no, we can go, yeah, page eight. Yeah. Uh, so we just have a breakdown for the general fund. Uh, so our budget's 23.4 million and then our actual expenditures through September 30th are, oh, we're just one page back. That's okay. Yep. We're at 15.9 million. And then comparatively, revenues versus expenditures, about 13.2 million for revenues so far this year through September 30. And then uh 15.9 million for expenditures.
And just to put a little comfort level on those, reminding you that the revenues for the second half of the property taxes will come in um mostly in November. And so that will catch up some of those revenues. And the expenditure, some of those expenditures are for transfers when we made the property acquisition, we transfer money from the general fund. So, and also too, as we built a budget anticipating using some reserves. So that's why you're seeing a little fluctuation between the revenues and expenditures.
Thank you. Yep. Uh, so page 10, and this is just a fund level um revenues versus expenditures.
Go on.
Yes.
Uh, it's still under revenue, general fund.
Yep.
Near the bottom, under intergovernmental was Saquamish Tribe for 20,000. Is that a Title X grant that went to police department or what?
The mitigation funds are the um, the, the police department shows up at those meetings and the, and the Saquamish tribe distributes funds and it's supposed to mitigate some of the traffic that comes through the city. And I believe they contribute on an every other year basis. And I don't, I think they come in towards the end of the year, so I don't remember if it's coming in this year or next year, but but the chief might be able to answer at the end of this year. So we'll see that. And usually it's, it's um, some of it's used to provide the operations and some of it they use for very specific purposes. And so we have the expenditure budgeted in, but we haven't expended it yet until we receive those funds.
Alrighty. Uh, so our fund level um budget to actual. And um I do just like to point out that some of these special revenue funds, they have some state shared revenues that can run on a one to two month lag. Uh, so that's what can show some of these variances and same with the um our capital projects funds, those are also transfer based. So uh, some of those outstanding transfers will be moved into the capital projects funds uh to assist with those. And uh utility funds are all on course as expected. And then this, uh, so page 11, this is just our uh financial management compliance. And um, just to make sure we're holding within our um 12% limit for uh fund balance and then two months of operating cash.
So, and so every fund, you see the good news is on the cash flow, the far right column, we're in compliance with our financial management policy. And when you see the fund balance in the red, those are, those are um special revenue funds designated. And so that's anticipated sometimes that they will not fall within that, but the cash is there.
Sure. And then just our next page is in just a chart overview of everything on the previous pages. And then I think, uh, so then we'll cover investments. Uh, we still have a very healthy investment mix. And uh, we are in the process of going to be letting some investments uh mature so that we have some additional cash flow for some utility projects for the county sewer. Is that correct? County sewer.
Correct. We, we have um, the last couple of months, we have not renewed the investments because we're anticipating a pretty large bill that we owe to the county for a sewer project. As well as we are funding the Nordic cottages and the Knoll Road, which we intend to go out for debt for those. And we have also have some grant reimbursement. So you might see our portfolio down for a little bit, but it's a, a very healthy portfolio. And we've um, we, we have the investment advisor who helps manage us, but we have investments um maturing almost every month. And we were able to capture these for a length of time and gain some pretty good interest. So I think next year, as you'll see, the market's going. Um, we're trying to renew, but we're going to lose some of those interest rates going forward. And that's the way it is always cyclical over the five year basis. So.
So we're almost done. So this uh, this section, it just um gives us a comparison year to year for our investments and we're pretty consistent for 2025. So still, like Debbie said, in good shape there. And then down below, this does uh illustrate just the cash in the general fund. And we did have a large transfer. Um, we did transfer part of the Nordic cottages to the facilities fund to cover those expenditures. And we still have half that transfer waiting.
We also transferred the money to purchase the land that's associated with the perk. So those are pretty large funds coming out of general fund.
Yes. Correct.
Exactly.
Correct. And as those investments mature, that will come back up for a little while. So we'll go up and down for a bit.
That's a good question.
Go ahead.
Uh, I know some time back, um, there were some concerns about um um, some federal cutbacks and possible closing of the HUD Seattle office um and what impact if any, that could, that could have on our Nordic cottages project. Are a- any new information about that? Everything's still looking good as far as we know?
As far as we know, yes.
Um, I, yeah, no, I think everything's going according to plan. And I heard from their finance um manager that it just, I think last week they've actually had some people occupying now, now they're moving in. So I haven't, I haven't heard any red flags on that.
Okay, great.
The federal government's messing around with a lot of funds right now, but so far I've, from what I've heard, he hasn't touched, they haven't touched the voucher programs per HUD.
Okay.
Okay, they've done a lot of other things, but they haven't messed with those.
Okay. Good news. Thank you.
Yep. And we're just at the last uh section and this is an overview of all the projects. But we do have a CIP project uh presentation coming up, so I won't spoil anything for them. So uh, if, yeah, if you have project specific questions, um, in the next section, that'd be, uh, we can cover them at that time. And that wraps up third quarter financial report.
So the good news is there's probably not any surprises that we haven't already addressed, such as the traffic camera revenue, which is a little higher in our BNO, which we're going to go and talk about next. And so um, we're continuing to monitor and I think we're, you know, the good news is we're staying on the positive side of it. And we budget very conservatively, so that's played well into this as well.
Okay, Rick, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wonder, you've mentioned before that with our investments that we, we got really good interest rates in the past, like um, with the interest rates changing, looking forward, is there any point that you foresee it would be financially to our benefit to retire the debt on City Hall early, using some of those investments? Or is it not leveling out like that that would be worth it?
Um, at this time, no, because we're actually receiving better interest rates. And keep in mind, interest rates might be going down um yeah, for earnings, but then it also is down in the debt side. And so the, and we don't owe a lot on the City Hall. The last payment comes out in 2033, but we've rolled off some of that debt already. And so the only way we would ever um pay it off, we'd probably roll it into a refinance, but it really is, it's really not worth it, especially it would um it would make me a little nervous putting that large of cash out to pay that off while we have these other large projects going. But it's definitely something to keep in the future. And every time we go to a debt issue, we do look at what's the benefits of either paying it off or incorporating it into a refunding issue.
Okay. Yeah, I just know because we've talked about levels, especially when we get into some of these bigger projects and what our capacity is. So I didn't know if at any point it made sense to try to retire this and kind of open that capacity back up a little bit. But if you're saying no, then.
Yeah, at, at right now, it hasn't. It wouldn't be a benefit. So, but, but it's always something to keep in mind. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Have we, we're, it sounded like we're at kind of the end of at least part of it.
That's, that's the end of, um, that's.
Part one.
Yeah, that's the end of visiting um where we are at in 2025. And now we're talking about, we want to have a discussion on BNO and this could impact some of our future budget. And then we're going to roll right into our city administrator presenting um some of the requests and the, what we've been doing moving forward in the 26th amendment. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So uh, let me see, still sharing my old screen. Stop, share.
So are we moving on to the mid, mid biennium budget or are you guys done or?
We're kind of rolling it all together. So we're going from the quarterly variance. And then we are going to bring the BNO into it, which rolls right into the mid biennium. So we're kind of rolling into it.
Next. Okay. All right. Thank you.
And then we'll, and then we'll end with the CIP as part of that amendment too. So it's a finance party tonight. I dressed for the occasion. I'm all glittery, right? Yeah. So um, there's been a lot of discussion and we've, and we've come back with the BNO tax update and the model ordinance. As you know, the state's been working on that and they just passed that. So you will be seeing coming forward that we have to adopt the model ordinance in December or prior to the first of the year to get in the new rules. The only updates this year, um, so going forward is, let's see. So the model ordinance update, um, right now, the only changes that they're including is the new retail tax categories. Um, they have to, they have to update it every few years according to the law. And they started to dig into it and there were a lot of requests and they figured under the time constraints, they weren't going to be able to accommodate those and get everybody in compliance. So the only thing proposed to share for changes is to update the ordinance. They added several new categories to be retail sales tax. So we're going to see some impacts in the city. They're um, they're doing IT subscriptions, you have to pay retail tax, a lot of professional services, live training, um, just different areas that they're going to include. And so the legal requirement, I know that one concern with the council and I heard administratively is that they um, we wanted to get rid of legal requiring for zero returns. Still in law, still will remain there. The hope is when they come forward, the next model ordinance that that will be in place and make it optional. But at this point, we don't, we don't have the ability to make that go away. And when I ask what the timing is of it, they really want to consolidate all of the requests and get it done in one time. So it's not in the immediate for future. It'll be a work in progress. Um, so here's against the categories that they're doing for the new ordinance. So you are now going to be paying sales tax, which also affects your BNO tax because you categories different, um, information technology, the software subscriptions that we're using, um, support any of those items, website design and development. So as you do that, that will now be a taxable item, investigation services. This also includes our um like our Loomis car credit that picks up all of our um funds and takes the weekly deposit. All of these will be taxable. What we did just find out is in Department of Revenue is still working through these issues. And so every um week they're putting out new guidance, but we just found out now is they had these all going to affect October 1st, where you're supposed to be paying the sales tax. But apparently if you had a contract in place before October 1st, you now are getting exemption and not collecting that sales tax until March 31st. And I just found that out today by somebody. So it's, we're trying to stay on top of it, but it is very confusing. I, it's, it's um, and and Department of Revenue is just as confused. And they put out, if you're interested, they put out many examples on the website on how to collect and when it's collect, do um, a big one is live training and webinars. Those are all going to be sales taxable now. So that will increase some of our.
But not legal fees, right?
I don't believe legal fees are included in that.
Lawyers don't want to collect sales.
Yeah, unless, unless they're doing some investigation for those legal services. Um, temporary staffing, those are your um credit, your temporary agencies that you might hire a part-time accountant. The big one that they're struggling with is advertising and this could result in a big lawsuit, I think, already one of the um, that the internet companies has filed the lawsuit because if you, they say if you're advertising on a website, it's still information technology, which has that federal moratorium on not taxable. So we're immediately collecting it and we had a big meeting with um City Seattle and Tax Round Trip. Um, and so that probably won't be settled for several years. So you might hear coming us forward in the future where we're giant, joining a consortium and um having all of the legal heads get together because we'll probably have to pay back, back taxes if they win that legal thing. I'm just basing it on the experience we had with AT&amp;T when they were charging voice over phone. Uh, so just, it's, there's a lot of questions and a lot of confusion. The law's passed and you kind of don't realize all the trickle down effects. And another one, the live presentation. So all of your conferences, when you attend AWC, you will be paying sales tax for those. And figuring out where to pay the sales tax. If you're doing training on the internet, you're supposed to collect where everybody is training from and pay the sales tax to those jurisdictions. But there's, but if you can't figure it out, then you can pay it where the host is. Uh, it's very confusing. So lots of changes coming. Yeah, sorry. Sorry to bring the fun news. Um, and so right now, Paul's most current rate, and it's the rate as far as what the model ordinance is established, is the maximum rate can charge is all taxable income at point 2%, that is point 002. Um, the city in um has brought in the minimum exemption according to the model. The city has brought in the minimum exemption according to the model ordinance is $20,000. And while also the minimum exemption is, once you reach that $20,000 threshold, you are taxed back to $0. The city appalls will implemented that we are going to recognize that exemption and we will tax only the earnings over that. So right now, what we have established is that businesses that collect retail sales tax over, we collect over $125,000. Then you start to pay on your tax at that point. And businesses that do not collect retail sales tax is the $20,000 threshold. What we found is one of those lessons learned when you implement it is very confusing for tax filers. So I wanted to give you comparable city rates on what their exemptions are. Right now Bainbridge Island has $150,000 exemption and their rate is point 001. They're a little bit smaller. They have more service agencies in there and not as many retail establishments as the city appals will does. Bremerton, the million 40,000, and they have different exemptions based on different categories. And their category ranges are from point 0016 to point 002. Their largest contributor to the BNO taxes, I said before, is their shipyard. And that's, that's why their exemptions are set that high is to capture those. Port Townsend has a minimum exemption of 100,000 and the same rate as Paul'sville. Shelton has put into place the 20,000 and North Bend is a 20,000. So trying to look at some of our neighbors, what they have and some of our comparable cities. So as of, these are pretty rough estimates that we've gathered. We drop everything down and people are still becoming compliant with the tax because it's a new tax. So about 37% of the businesses are exceeding $10,000 payments each quarter that exceed that $5 million in sales. 38% of the businesses exceeding $1,000 a payment each quarter is about $500,000 of gross earning. 23% of the businesses exceeding $100 payments, which would be about $50,000 in earnings. And 2% of the businesses less than a dollar payment each quarter. And that's what makes up the revenue stream for these. So going on to that is just letting you know that 25% of our businesses, the number of businesses fall in that category of 2% of our income. So they're not the large revenue generator. So, so increasing the exemption to be equal to $125,000 for each category. And the reason that we are in, we are trying to encourage this is because, because of the confusion for businesses. It's very confusing for businesses and also lessons learned is when we put this into place, what we didn't realize is, oh, there may be businesses that do both wholesaling and retailing. And now they're taking both exemptions and they're taking it in different categories for different reasons. And so our, our tax clerk Gretchen spends a lot of time on the phone with people. She actually has people come to the counters and helps them fill out their, their forms because it is confusing. And so making it a little bit more consistent would be the help of not only our department, but tax filers. And it also, it's not that large of a revenue impact to make that ease of filing. So that's, that's why we are looking at it. And keep in mind, as we're, as the numbers keep growing, we're still changing. We're getting compliant because we're still collecting some funds that were due in 2024. So again, here's the cons to not having the exemption. It's, it's confusion for filing, you know, it is a slight loss of revenue. It's eliminating the impact to businesses who require the services but aren't doing sales tax collectors. But as one of our council members pointed out today is, they may be, they may not be creating sales tax, but they are bringing in business in the way of they're occupying offices in the city. They're paying utility taxes, property taxes. So it's not as if they're not contributing to some of our economic drivers in the city. And that's why I think we're kind of encouraged me to drop that category is they are contributing not as much retail as some of the other businesses, but going in that direction. And also the cost for software programming for getting these, we have to, as we change these exemptions, we're going to have to pay our software provider to change that online portal. It shouldn't be that much money, but it is a slight cost to that. The benefits, again, the ease of reporting, less category confusion, the total exemption for filers for both wholesalers and retailers. And so we're not breaking those out and doing both of those. And it's a little bit more business friendly from our perspective. So as is the options, we can leave as is, we can leave it with the exemption, the 125 and the 20,000 and non-retail at the rate of point 002. We can equalize the exemptions, making them both the same at the 125,000. If you wanted, and we're concerned about the loss of revenue is we could lower that exemption and say, once you've reached that $125,000 threshold, you're going to pay taxes going from zero up to that amount. I mean, that's a way to recoup that if you wanted to. And per the model ordinances, businesses who exceed the threshold, the exemption is then $0, right? So they would, they would do that. They still would file a return, but it'd be $0. It also, what we don't talk about too is, is once we increase that threshold to $125,000, we tell filers, if you make more than $100,000 to file annually, this will enforce that almost all filers are going to file quarterly and keeping a steady stream of, of income that we can project and go forward with. So it is, it is a staff recommendation to put that exemption 125 for both categories and maintain the rate of point 002. But it's, it's up to council's decision, but whatever, hopefully we, we have some direction. We can bring the ordinance forward in December and get that adopted.
Okay, so we're going to jump it up to 125. How's it, go ahead.
I think this is good for now. It's a step in the right direction. We're going to gain more experience and numbers over the next six to 12 months. And, you know, I'm certainly going to want to take a second look at that point.
Go ahead, Doug.
Yeah, I think this is an example of good government where we learn from practice and we make adjustments. As we've discussed before, you know, there's quite a burden for some of these small company, small individuals that have external accounting. You know, if you make 120,000, you have the 20,000 exemption, you're paying $200 to us. But your accounting costs might be a thousand. And so that doesn't make the small businesses feel good. It's another burden on them. And it's demonstrated by Deb, it's, it's a minimal amount of contribution. And oh, by the way, we're collecting hundreds of thousands of dollars more than what we initially attempt. So it's, I think it's the right thing to do for our business community.
This is not a hill I'm going to die on because I think, I think you're, I think you're right. Go ahead. Go ahead, Gary, and then.
Yeah, I, I support this. I think particularly if they're going to keep introducing new categories and changing categories, the more consistency we can provide on our side, the better, I think.
Let me ask, can I ask a question first though? Before, if you make 125,010, are then, are you liable for the entire 125 underneath?
How it's set up now is we would collect the tax on $10.
Just $10. You don't, you're not going to go back in and.
I mean, that, that's our proposal, but you guys can always decide differently.
All right. Rick, go ahead.
Yeah. So Deb and I talked about this as well. I have a couple of issues with changing it. One, we're saying it's a minimal amount of money, so it's not a big deal what the city loses. Well, we basically just raised property tax, the same amount of money. So if we're saying we need the money in the property tax, but yet we're willing to take the loss in the BNO, I think that's a mixed message. My other concern is that when this tax was implemented and all the discussions that went into it, there was a lot of conversation about, we need businesses who operate in our city, but otherwise pay no other tax to the city. So don't contribute, but use our services to start to contribute. If you operate in the city of Pauls boat, but you don't operate from a fixed location. So say a vehicle and your business is somewhere else, Silverdale, the county, somewhere else. We are going to return at least a category of those businesses to that category. They don't, they're going to use our streets, they're going to use our police, they're going to use our streetlights, our street cleaners, our snow clean, and they're not going to contribute. So that was part of the original intent this council created this tax for. And to me, we're returning that folks back to that category of not paying in. I get that there are some who have businesses here, like have an office and then pay the other taxes. But there are plenty who don't. You see service trucks of various businesses all the time who don't pay sale, retail sales tax, and then also don't pay this tax based on this change. So I think it's a mixed message. I think, again, we keep putting the burden on the folks that live here. When we have a lot of other folks that use our services, that we, this needs to be spread to the folks that are using the services, not just those that live here. So I, I don't support changing it. I, I get that it's easier on the staff and Deb and I talked about that. I asked for a dollar figure of what it would save at staff time to process. That was something she was, that was a little harder to come up with. But 20 hours, I think you said you thought it might save. But again, I, I think the folks that want to come into our city and do business need to contribute to running our city.
Okay, who's next?
Okay, I don't think it's quite that simple. I mean, I'm directly involved with folks that I pay as contractors to do work for me. And they live in the city, but they're renters. They don't own a home. And this is a burden on, you know, I mean, they're, they're well below that $125,000 annual threshold. But over the 20. So I mean, it, trying to figure it all out, sole proprietor type, small business, operating and living in Pauls boat, but not owning property. I don't, I don't see those two things as, I don't see it as a mixed message. I think they're totally different issues.
I think, I think you were next, Doug, and then Gary.
Just, yeah, I would say that since the profits coming probably significantly from outside of Pauls boat, I see it as impacting everyone.
Gary?
Yeah, I, Deb, maybe I missed it, but it maybe we're unable to. What, to Rick's point of, you know, we're sort of leaving revenue on the table, so to speak. How, what is the estimate for what we, what we would lose, if you will, if we made this change?
I estimated less than 50,000 more properly, about 30,000 by leaving the $125,000 exemption.
You know, that's, that's kind of why I don't have a problem with it. It's, it's not a huge impact. It's, I can see your, it's symbolic, Rick. I understand that. But I think.
Property tax increase was 32,000. So we're shifting that burden to me off of one group onto a different group.
I'd like to make one more point to, as a reminder that I've, I've said this before, but I'm going to say it again. The accountant that I use at tax time quoted me $300 a quarter to file BNO taxes. I can assure you, I will not owe anywhere near that. So it does, it just, it, it is a burden for these really small businesses, I think, if they need that help.
Okay.
And the state threshold is over 100. So these folks aren't paying to state BNO because of the burden.
Just for our tiny.
Yeah. So we're taxing them, the state isn't.
Okay, so this will be coming to the business agenda next council meeting. Okay. All right. So onward, folks. Thanks, Deb. Well done. Okay, so now we have the department department bid biennium budget presentation, and this is wrong.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. Yes. Should be doing slideshow. There we go. Okay. Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here this evening. Not having been through the budget process before, I know it's going to look a little bit different. So surprise. So as, as opposed to having each department come up and sort of go through their requests, wanted to change it up a little bit this year because part of the process was really trying to collectively come together as a team. This is a team sport. It's not about departments functioning in isolation, but how can we collaboratively work together to come up with recommendations to council?
So you're saying we're not going to get the pitch deck and the wooing and the.
Sorry, no wooing. I'm, I'm not actually going to talk, no. But it's, so if you want that, I, everybody is here. They can come up and woo if needed. But really, the, the focus today, and I'll get into it a little bit in the slides, is that, I mean, this is a team effort and we really wanted to kind of shift. And this was the start. So we're starting to put some things into place that hopefully we'll be able to expand on as we get into the development of the next biennial budget. So, so a little bit of truth of the agenda is like, where have we been? What have I heard in the course of having conversations earlier in the year? Doing things a little bit differently, kind of setting the framework for how do we potentially move forward? And then we'll get into some of the recommended changes for the, the mid biennium adjustments and then looking ahead. So a little bit about where we've been, you've seen these graphs before. The 2021, you'll see in the terms of revenues, you know, that you see the impacts of ARPA. In 2025, you're going to see the impacts of the, the transfer for Nordic cottages, the purchase of the additional perk property, et cetera. So those are a little bit outliers. And while it may not be the perfect metric to utilize, I just thought I would throw out this FTE per 1,000 residents. And so this takes into account from basically a 10-year spread from 2020, 2015 to 2025 that you can see on a per resident basis, per thousand resident basis, we're actually losing ground relative to our FTEs. And so that means we're actually trying to provide a certain level of service to the community with fewer FTEs in that regard. Now, the, the one caveat here that I would call out in, since 2015, we've seen the most growth in FTEs related to H3 or housing health and human services, right? So I went ahead and did the calculation, taking those FTEs out. And so you can actually see it helped to buoy that number to 8.8 FTEs. But when you take H3 out, it's more like 8.3. So it has slid, but it's just a metric. It's not necessarily the metric to utilize because when you think about the services that we provide, it is, it's not just calls for service. It's the nature of those calls. Each one of those are weighted in a different way because some things take more time than others.
For the H3, is that whether it's funded by the city or funded by grants or just.
It's, it's, it's funding agnostic.
Okay.
Just FTEs. Yeah. When it comes to our utilities, right, it's the number of customers we have. It's the, the miles of pipe that we have in the ground, the, the streets that we're servicing, et cetera. So we will continue to round out a, a level of metric analysis as we go forward. But in terms of what I heard, you know, we're doing a lot of phenomenal things in the city. And a lot of things are working extremely well. But there's always opportunities for improvement. Some of the key themes that I heard in, in those conversations were around training and development, safety assessments, communications predominantly. While there were some external, this was really predominantly internal communications and breaking down silos in this, this instance. Process improvement. How do we work smarter, not harder? Human resource capacity. So our ability to onboard services, staffing, recruitment, leadership development and succession planning. I, we have some seen, we have some long-term employees that, that it probably in the not too distant future, right, will be, be transitioning to another chapter. And so we have to be thinking about how do we plan for the future? And then technology infrastructure. I mean, that goes part and parcel this day, whether it's AI or some other software platform. It is key to our ability to be able to provide services in the most cost-effective way. So between, I would say about May and October, we started, we had actually had a subcommittee of individuals from your leadership team that came together and said, okay, so how do we start to frame the conversation? And I apologize that you can't really read those slides. Those were just really to be illustrative. But we, we started to talk about sort of how do we create a matrix or a framework by which we could have kind of this equitable conversation about prioritization and making those investments. We looked at cost recovery, depending on the type of service that we were doing, which ones actually have revenue coming in versus they're just a cost of doing business. We 100% have to fund those. But also looking at sort of what is our level of service as it, as that inter interacts with supporting the growth in our community? And therefore then can we establish a high, medium, low in terms of prioritization process? But I would say that probably the number one takeaway for me as we had these conversations is we spent, oh, probably the half a day, each of your department leaders developed that five-year outlook. Because budgeting and making these investments in our ability to provide services to the community are not relegated to just a biennium, right? It is looking long term. And that was great because we each had an opportunity to share with each other what we're seeing on the horizon. What are those, those stressors? What are those pinch points that we're all experiencing that we need to take into account? So that we have a better understanding of each other and their work and, and how. So that we have a better understanding of each other and their work and, and how we can be supportive in that regard. So some of the basic assumptions is, as you would expect, you know, we're looking at inflationary impacts, our, our labor agreements that we have, uh, longevity, premium increases, contract increases, et cetera. That's just our, kind of our base going forward. Do we have to plan for that? Because we have contractual, uh, yes.
Let you finish, Seth. Um, so some of the asks on FTE that have weight, is that because they were more five-year asks and you're saying wait short term then?
Uh, probably a little bit of both.
Okay.
Um, so I, I would say in terms of getting, and we'll just jump right in, um, to that, that I would say the, the caveat is you'll notice that I didn't put no in anything, right? Um, because truly when, when all of these, they're all needs. They're all programmatic operational needs. Um, we can't do it all. So in terms of collaborative, collaborating with each other, uh, we just kind of had to make a, a breakpoint. Um, don't worry about the numbers right now. We'll come back next week, uh, with more for you in terms of the, the three column approach and being able to say, what can we actually afford going forward? That, that will happen. Today was really meant to illustrate, you know, what were all the various requests and why? It's really important that we all understand, um, kind of what's motivating, what's, what's on the horizon. So I'm just going to jump into that if it's okay. If there are no other questions. So I know, uh, communications PIO has long been a conversation, but one of the things that emerged in the conversations that I had with staff earlier in the year was really just a disconnect and, and not an alignment in our city brand. Um, you can look at any department and you don't necessarily, other than the, the shape of our logo, sometimes the colors are different, the wording is different. How we present ourselves to the community is just, for lack of better terms, maybe a little hodgepodge, right? And so this was an effort to say, okay, let's go out to, um, if funded, to have somebody assist us with that brand unification. Let us make sure that when we're presenting to the community, we look like the city of Paulsville regardless. Uh, some of these you, I could throw into the, um, the category of just the cost of doing business, ICC code book update. That's something we have to do periodically. It's just something that, uh, we need to do. And again, sorry, I did not introduce this. These are one-time requests that make sense to, they're not necessarily ongoing per se, but we could utilize existing fund balance to, to fund these. Sendio, um, is one that you will probably find in some of your documentation that was in sort of the ongoing and in some ways it is, uh, but that is an opt-in program. And what that will do is actually screen out a lot of spam. Um, so I don't know how much spam you get in your city email accounts, but this would actually have a, a filter that someone actually has to opt in for your email to be delivered. Um, several various jurisdictions have it and it does a great service in sort of dropping that amount of spam. Verkata, uh, this is, um, again, our door access, uh, systems that we have predominantly in City Hall. Um, as with all great technology, uh, you can't get the parts, things aren't supported anymore. It has lived after fifteen years, outlived its life and needs to be replaced. This, the next couple are, uh, uses of various revenue streams, uh, so the use of liquor tax revenue and opioid funds to support, uh, H three, uh, specifically. Uh, the next one in Parks and Rec is structural assessment. If you've been at the Parks and Rec Center, you know that we have a couple of racquetball courts. We don't have a lot of people playing racquetball. So the, the idea is look at the, um, do some analysis of that wall. Can that center wall be removed? And open that space to be better programmed, more efficiently programmed that can then do cost recovery and bring on other revenues to support the Parks and Rec program. Uh, the next five, uh, are really related to the emergency, um, management program. We've funded or you funded, uh, half FTE to do those programs, but we didn't necessarily put the infrastructure around it. So a lot of this is, is meant to support that. First one is moving the emergency operations center to the Public Works Building. Uh, if you've been in there, we have this large, uh, sanctuary, former sanctuary that is ripe for, uh, being reprogrammed, uh, for that purpose. So that is in there. Um, and a lot of these are more material dollars because we will be able to utilize to the best of our ex, uh, best of our abilities, um, some, uh, internal labor to, to do those upgrades. Did you have a question, sir?
Oh, I do.
I, I don't know. I can't speak to the clock. Okay, so, um, updates and upgrades to the various, uh, equipment that we'd have in there, uh, being able to fund a certain amount of community outreach. I know one of the, the concerns or the hopes is that we get to a point after we sort of make sure that our own house is in order for emergency management, that we are able to go out to the community and partner and, uh, revitalize some of the, the neighborhood activities that had been, uh, potentially available even pre-COVID, but may have faltered since then. Um, looking at facility safety upgrades. Um, and then one thing that is, uh, a, a need and a gap that emerged most recently was the, the loss of a severe weather shelter, uh, when Gateway no longer took that. This is a collaboration between emergency management and Parks and Rec. Uh, there are kits available to be able to provide a certain amount of equipment, whether it's cots, pillows, et cetera, to support, uh, so severe weather response activities.
Yeah. So my question is just, that would just be the physical setup to actually operate a, a weather center. That would be something else we'd have to look at conceptually.
Correct. The, the staffing of a center is not part of that request. Yep. Um, CDL training, uh, we have a large amount of equipment, big equipment. They require the CDL to, um, to manage that. So this is investing in our employees to actually be able to, to get those credentials. Uh, we are going around and systematically converting LEDs in our streetlights. Um, that's not yet complete. This will actually help us get to that completion. Uh, facility safety improvements. This is specifically for Parks and Rec. Again, it's also, uh, related to doors and cameras. Um, but it's making that initial investment to make that available. What you won't find in any of the requests is this next, uh, suggestion for council consideration around investing some of that fund capacity into, uh, the future boardwalk replacement project. As we've continued to explore that, it's, it's one of those projects that has grown over time in terms of the magnitude and potential cost. It's probably looking at to be somewhere in that two plus million dollar range. And so being able to make investments and starting to set something aside, uh, that will go a long way in the future.
Can I ask a quick question about that? When you're talking about that increasing price point for the boardwalk, are we talking about like the full replacement to do it right? Take the creosote out? Or what are we talking about getting for that?
Question, um, not sure to the, the level of analysis that's gone in.
Um, just really quick, you might, uh, remember that we had a study done and it was eight hundred thousand to one point two to do repairs on the boardwalk and significantly higher, um, for a complete replacement. Um, there's some, um, immediate needs to be addressed. And, uh, the more work we do, it triggers, um, some requirements from Fish and Wildlife and the HPA to replace the deck and make it more visible, less shade, things like that. So the more you dig into the repairs, the more it triggers additional repairs that need to happen throughout the boardwalk, if that makes sense. So what I would say is we really need to do the design and the permitting to determine what level of mitigation would need to happen. So we are estimating a higher number than we've had previously based on what we expect, um, as a result of the permitting process.
If we don't fix this and it starts to fall apart, we will never get it back. Okay, from a permitting standpoint. Am I correct on that?
That's correct. You might remember that we had a preliminary design for the extension of the boardwalk all the way to, um, the auto dealership at the Bonden and, um, Front Street. And, uh, that project is no longer moving forward because it did go from a couple million dollars to five or six million dollars as a result of the changes that I'm, I'm mentioning.
Thank you, Diane.
The sooner we do it, the better for a lot of reasons.
Okay, so, um, continuing on, those were sort of the one-time requests. The next I, we, I put everything into sort of the utility bucket. And I guess one of the observations and the reason why you're going to see a lot of yeses here, um, and again, they're all extremely important and I would probably turn them all to yeses, um, is that one of our biggest investments, one of our biggest roles in terms of providing services to the community is through our utilities. Um, and no individual resident of the city can provide that on their own. It is up to us, but it's also one of those areas where we probably have some of the biggest liability. If we have something occur on, uh, with a sewer pump station and we have a spill, we have issues with, with water, we have, you name it, the, the threshold and the concern, um, if this is not where we want to skip. Uh, we need to be able to have the appropriate level of staffing to make sure that we can meet those current and growing needs. So we have in here a mixture of things. Uh, first one is just a reclassification, uh, which has a financial impact. One of the, the, the next one, I would say is asset management. It is foundational, um, to be able to catalog and know every single piece of sidewalk, pipe, pump, you name it, uh, that is in, in facilities, even within the city. Because you, if you don't have a good sense of everything that's, that we have on the docket, the lifecycle of those preventative maintenance, et cetera, then we don't stay ahead of the maintenance of those types of, of services. So this position specifically would assist predominantly the Public Works Department, but I would argue the entirety of the city, parks, et cetera, with being able to stay on top of the assets that we have and the investments that we need to make. Uh, utility and services fee increase, these are just some obligatory, obligatory, uh, increases that we are contractually mandated to do. Kitsap County has increased their rates and that's one of those things that we have to pay. Um, and then we have a couple of sewer maintenance tax, uh, on the docket for your consideration. Utility and service fee, again, these increases that are already there, uh, services lead position, again, just being able to, um, provide not only, um, kind of re, not a reclassification, but a, a differentiation difference in, in level, um, just so that there is a greater structure, uh, within those departments. Streets maintenance, I know it's, it's weight and again, in the greater scheme of the, uh, things, I, I would love it to be yes. And the reason why it was wait is because the streets program is that area where we have the greatest impact on the general fund. So hence that was the, the area of caution in that regard. Couple of reclasses and Waterworth Software is a, uh, program that actually will allow us to almost real time be able to do our own utility rate studies. As opposed to going out for a consultant each time, uh, while we might want to do that occasionally or periodically to do some additional ground truthing, the software will allow us to have all the various inputs and the cost drivers and be able to kind of do our own sense of where we are with our rates and where we need to be and then be able to bring those to council for consideration. Cross connection flow, backflow prevention software, um, in terms of managing our, our, our water utility. Yeah, gotta have that. Um, and it's, um, one of those necessities. Again, additional increases that we have to, um, incorporate, although testing cost increases and that gets back to the water quality. And then a parks grounds maintenance, uh, tech. Again, that is that impact to the general fund. Uh, one of the things that we hope to be able to bring back online next year after the creation and building of the, the caretaker, cottage at Rob Park, we'll be able to bring that FTE back online so that we can increase our capacity, uh, supporting parks. Yes.
I don't think you would have been here last time we talked about this. One, that question I had asked, specifically with the street and then like the grounds would kind of fall into this. And I think Mike had one or two other positions at the time. Where if we had the same, keep saying no to those kind of positions, and I understood particularly at the streets why we were, would it, you know, we're saying no to say four, would it, would it be possible to say yes to one generalist that he could then use across the utilities? It's not something we wanted to look at last time, but I want to bring it up again. Cause we, he's got kind of some of the same positions, well, almost all the same positions back. Um, if he's moving people across and backfilling and, you know, if that's something that's possible and it's possible within our collective bargaining unit and, you know, to just, so he has a person that isn't maybe necessarily specialized to a utility, but gives him that extra person for safety and cross-training and all, I, I, I would like to see us at least pursue that.
And that happens to a large degree already. It's just, we, and, and Diane can correct me or Debbie can correct me if I'm wrong, is that we, while we have a certain amount of fluidity and an ability to kind of move those resources around, uh, as the need arises, most of those individuals are hardcoded to a particular, um, utility or fund. Um, so we have a certain amount of flexibility, but, um,
Yeah, it's my understanding in, in our bargaining units agreements, uh, they're getting more specialized in that area than they used to be, but there is a lot of crossover because they're working with limited number of people and the functions change. What you have to be careful of is you don't want to hire, um, a water technician, pay him out of water and then go clean the parks every day because that it, you can't be charging the rate payers for services, not provided to that. But, um, they do manage their people and they do provide a lot of cross-training and backups to those systems. So that's the ultimate goal, but as we grow, they're getting more specialized than what we've had in the past.
Um, I'm sorry. It's okay. But, um, what, um, what's the thinking? What was the team's thinking in terms of the, uh, the two new sewer technician positions? Um, get given the changes that we're headed to for solid waste and, uh, uh, possibility of, uh, maybe, uh, some movement into those positions by people currently employed? Can you, can you share that with us a little bit?
Sure. And I'll, I'll ask Diane to stop.
Um, we anticipate that the earliest that we would outsource solid waste would be, um, January twenty twenty seven, and it might be more likely January twenty twenty eight. Um, between now and then, we anticipate three to four attrition as a result of retirements and other items. So we have five people in the solid waste, um, division that are drivers. Um, we anticipate the majority of those will fill the, um, potentially attrition positions. And, um, of the two, uh, sewer positions, we would fill one immediately. Um, the second one, I think we would keep an eye on what we expect to happen over the next year before we, uh, fill that position. So it is possible that that second position would wait until a solid waste person moved into that position. So we are looking at that, um, as just, just as you mentioned, I, I think that was a good point.
Yeah, just not, when you come back, when we talk about costs and stuff, just for this section, appreciate dialogue on impact to our rates or potential impact to our rates, you know, whether we're have to raise our rates in order to support these positions.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And, and just to point out, you did just pass your sewer comprehensive plan and built into that plan was anticipation of some of these hires.
Just when we bring this back for yes or just revalidate rates, you've already got baked in or we're talking about, I just appreciate that dialogue.
Yep. It's a great question.
Thank you, Becky. Uh, Diane, any impacts, positive or negative on solid waste being exited in relation to Bing Bridge disposal recycling?
You expand on your on the question a little bit. I think that when we look at solid waste, we need to look at the garbage service and the recycling element as a a package. And by that, I mean, we need to look at the most competitive service provider for both of those surfaces. And then the yard waste or composting is under a different number of restrictions, so that could potentially stay the way it is. Does that make sense?
When will that happen in your mind?
We we will have this at the next meeting because we have interviewed the consultant and she has laid out a schedule that I can share with you, which basically has a negotiated contract by the end of twenty twenty six for services.
And again, that I heard it clearly. So we have the solid waste garbage.
Yep.
We have the recycling.
Yep.
And we have the compost yard waste.
Yeah.
All three will be evaluated separately?
I I think that when we go out for procurement, we will definitely go out for those first two. I'm not sure about the yard waste, which has the ability to operate independently of the city like it currently does right now. The other two, I think, will look at potentially outsourcing, at least that would be my recommendation to get the most cost effective price on those. Yeah, and Bainbridge disposal, like they were previously, would definitely be a potential candidate for all of that, I'm sure.
Any other questions? Okay. Keep going. And so the the next in sort of the general fund category, and again, is it's the opportunity to really talk about sort of the why behind it, and this is for lack of better terms or titles, is a business enterprise analyst. And and really there, it gets back to working smarter and not harder, but having somebody with a skill set in the city that is able to be a centralized service to work with any department to look at process improvement. How do we sort of lean our processes down? How do we make sure that we have the right application to go with the right process, et cetera, to be able to continue to provide the services to the community? So pardon? A black belt? Doesn't necessarily have to be a black belt, but possibly, yep. The next one is the PIO. I know the council is has talked about the need for this role as well of sort of not necessarily being able to help the the city get to a proactive position versus reactive when it comes to communication. And this is across the board, not just sort of emergent issues, but just how do we communicate to the the public in all the various ways and coordinate it? The next one is a commercial plan review on call inspection services. This is additional capacity to make sure that we are able to do timely review of plans and and actually inspect on the ground. The next one is a bit, this could fall into a couple of categories where the initial investment in the website refresh could be potentially one time, but there would be ongoing subscription fees for whatever platform we end up on. But the really the driver is this, we have about a year in order for our website to be compliant for ADA compatibility. So this is almost a must do and why it has, not an almost a must do, it is a must do within the next year, and we still have a lot to figure out relative to our ability to actually achieve some of those mandates coming down. Facilities maintenance assistant, I I would turn this one on in a heartbeat. We have a couple of folks that are extremely highly skilled, doing so much throughout the city. And they really need for us to be able to continue as we have older facilities, even new facilities, but just be able to stay on top of the maintenance requirements, and this really in many ways ties into that asset management function. HVAC RFP, I think it's fairly self explanatory utility cost increase. The next couple kind of three items I would put together. And for a civil, when you think about the our ability to deliver on capital projects in the city, whether it's the creation of of eight units of housing or it is some other type of project, it takes that skilled engineering capacity or ability to actually manage the projects to deliver those. And we have a lot, and like this is probably the precursor to the CIP presentation coming up next. When you look at the the magnitude of what we have to accomplish and what is programmed, it it will take that level of staffing to make it happen. Now, one is wait, one is yes, and that is if on some level, the the project coordinator might be able to better assist and support and take some of the the lower level the the lower level activities that would need to actually support those those projects who are coming along. So that's why that project management software, the ability to actually manage and track those projects and make sure that we stay on time. Purchasing coordinator, one of sort of the observations that I've had since being here is that we have a lot of functions that are decentralized. Purchasing in many ways is one of those. I know that in the past, there had been sort of a purchasing function in the city. But there really is a need for that expertise. Right now, we end up de facto burdening April. She ends up being our go to person to make sure that we are doing it right. Yes.
Can you just give some examples of what you mean when you're talking about purchasing?
So there's a lot of rules that regards to purchasing, and when I've been out talking to several cities, they've they've now started implementing it. So it's not an entire purchasing department where they would do the purchasing. But what this person would do would help departments get through some of the rules and regulations. For instance, if you were to buy something over seven thousand five hundred dollars, if we spent more than seven thousand five hundred dollars according to the rules of the legislature, we would have to go out for sealed RFP. You have to issue an RFP, you have to get the sealed bids back in, and you have to follow these rules unless we're purchasing on state contracts. April's very helpful in projects. You have to bid, you have to get and and not only bid, as you have to follow with statements of intent to pay prevailing wages, insurance certificates. But there's so many rules and it makes me nervous and and the auditor comes in. And for instance, you have to you have to even professional services, which have more allowances, you still have to do your due diligence of interviewing, looking at what's out there. And so with all of us doing it all, it it's a lot of expertise that we don't all have. And this person would not be coming and directing them, but they would be the resource to, hey, if you're going to purchase this, let's look on the state website and see what contracts are out there we can do. So it's more of a coordination and helping us get something accomplished and also staying under the rules of the law and keeping us nice and sane with the auditors as well.
So continuing on, the next three are with H three. In this, the first request is actually to make all of the the director's salary out out of the general fund versus some of the other sources. The the next one was sort of that forward thinking. If we are looking to be able to really focus on future development of additional affordable housing, having somebody on staff that knows how to develop housing would be kind of that that skill set. This was just one idea. I think Kim and a few other folks are noodling on other ways to be able to incent or create housing that may not require this, but this was just sort of planting the seed. We also, the next one is a peer support. We actually have grant funding for a portion of the year. This is looking to be able to to completely fund that position from January through June. Because the grant begins actually in July. Information services, PC technician. Again, this is, while it may be a weight, it is definitely one of those areas to have the number of one hundred and fifteen or so full time FTE and the the everything else that, whether it's software, network, et cetera. We have a lot going on with only two people doing that, and I would say that that is one of those. There's not a lot of opportunity for, I mean, the linkages can break very, very simply, so. And then going into parks and rec specifically, the first one is a reclass for recreation manager. That is where you'll probably see for the first time is just a cost recovery. So that's available to be fully cost recovered. The sports and facilities coordinator, and this is specifically for the perk. So while this is a weight, we I've been working with Jeff, we're going to dust off the performer. Because one thing that we want to make sure that we don't do is that we have a facility that is ready to have the lights turned on and we don't have it programmed so that we're able to do as much cost recovery and programming there as possible. So we're going to need to front load this position at some point in time. Exactly when that will be, we'll come back and have that conversation with council. Yes, sir.
So yeah, you had timing in there. So do you still think it would be twenty twenty six?
I I think there very well could be an argument to be made for some time in twenty twenty six. When you look at the the development schedule for the perk, we go to, we award the bid in March. We begin construction, it's probably about an eighteen month process, so probably by the end of twenty twenty seven, we'll be ready to to turn on the lights and go. It takes time to be able to actually develop the the leaves sort of in many ways, get those leaks and other groups to start to shift where they're doing it, because they're they need to probably a year in advance, start to make agreements or to actually schedule time with all the various other facilities. And so if they're going to make that shift, we need to be able to start doing that probably the end of twenty twenty six.
So that's saying, that's kind of what I was thinking when I read the the write up on it. Would it? Would it be safer to budget for it? And then maybe you don't end up hiring something needing to do it till maybe the end of the year, even twenty twenty seven, rather than we wait to budget until you you and Jeff say, yeah, we really do need to do it, like get it in the budget. So it's not, if you feel the need to pull the trigger, you have the ability to pull the trigger.
And I appreciate that, but at the same time, I think we need to look at the operation in its entirety. Because it's not just this position that will be required to manage that facility. You're going to need maintenance individuals because that's a whole different level and new type of maintenance that we've never done in terms of artificial fields, right? So it's, we've got to figure out the big picture and then figure out the timing of when those positions have to come on. Because even before it opens, we're going to need to have the folks that can maintain it and that are trained to do it from the get go. Right? So we have to look at that whole timeline, and I have not had the opportunity to delve in that into that with Jeff yet. So a senior and adaptive recreation specialist, this is a federal requirement. So if someone, and we cannot cost recover for it. If someone needs to have some accommodation so that they can participate in one of our recreational programs, we need to try to meet that need to the best of our abilities. This position will actually help us to be able to to do that specific coordination. Summer nights at the bay, you will probably recall historically, there's been a ten thousand dollar match towards a special events coordinator position. This is looking at being able to shift that commitment to the concert series specifically. It takes a huge amount of staff time and effort to beat the bushes and get sponsorships to underwrite the cost of that series. This would actually help us kind of take a little bit of a breather on some level by being able to continue doing that. Yep.
Thanks, Rob. Direct this, you and as well as the LTAC Chair Gary McVeigh. Does this mean we're delaying on a special events coordinator because that ten thousand match previously was structural to the position?
Don't know. Basically, it it has always been sort of the the understanding that that special events coordinator position would be coming from LTAC funding, and that is a recommendation that will be coming forward to council. This ten thousand wasn't always sort of baked into that model, and this is just an opportunity to reposition it.
And I think my recollection is we've been advertising the position, special events coordinator position, right? And I'm betting we're probably close to maybe starting some interviews soon, perhaps. So it's, I don't see it delaying it, Ed, if that's the question. Yeah.
Yeah, I I just read it as now the concerts are basically covered and they don't have to spend the time looking for the sponsors. If we would get sponsors, that's great. That's sort of extra, but this means the concerts will go forth regardless of having somebody out there seeking sponsors.
It doesn't preclude it. It just provides us the opportunity to have a certain amount of funding to be able to to commit to bands at a certain time. That's the hardest part when you're looking for sponsorship dollars and it doesn't come in until later in the cycle, then you are scrambling to secure somebody to actually plug into that that evening and do the publicity around it.
Just to put it in, I'm fine with this. City councils come and go and enter into policies and agreements, and then another council comes along and goes in a different direction, partially. That's the lay of the land. The previous LTAC, the members as a whole decided it was advantageous for the city to have some skin in the game in that position. Instead of entirely on LTAC, I just state that for the record, but things change. That's why I turned to Gary.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I'll continue. So and then the recreation specialist, this is actually an individual we already have on staff, but they are basically our casual labor. This request is to actually have that position go from casual labor to an actual FTE. Still half time, still does not earn benefits per se, but what it does is it actually kind of assists with the the solidifying of the organizational structure, knowing that is a a function that needs to to exist in terms of the programming overall. Wellness committee, that is just some ability to have a little extra funding to send folks to a conference. Planning gets the award for probably the most simple. These are just some increases that they have in terms of communications, dues, subscriptions, travel. And last but not least, I know was one of a conversation for for many of you, and that is a code enforcement role. There was some internal conversation is where was this best be placed? And given that sort of the nature of a lot of the complaints, it probably would make sense that it's not necessarily a law enforcement kind of position, but it is one that it would be better situated in planning.
Position has always been in planning, and we lost it during the recession way like over a decade ago. I'm going to be very blunt. We really need this position with the level of building we have going on right now. And I I we absolutely need it for that, but we also need it. I don't know if you've seen this. Well, we're just getting over an election. Have anybody looked at the streets lately of all the signs all over everywhere? It's that kind of, it's it's bad, okay? And so you know, it's it's time to uh time to clean the town up and do some enforcement.
The one thing I would offer, though, is in terms of this is a position, if funded and and filled, we have to also understand the expectations of one individual for the entirety of the city and all of the potential demands. We have a very decentralized code enforcement or response program now that is that's not necessarily going to go away, even with a code enforcement individual, because I think we're still going to need to pull from the expertise of the various departments.
I think we can employ this person fully all day, every day and still use the expertise of the others. Because like Becky said, this has been gone on for a long time and codesigns are just one area. I think it was, I think what Heather at one point presented and said to her, or one of her staff, said there were twelve officially approved ADUs in the city right now. And I can easily count more than that just from having driven past. So there there's a lot of code enforcement need out there.
And then again, it gets back to code enforcement is it's sort of the conversation that we would end up needing with council as to what's the prioritization? Because there's only a finite amount of time for any particular individual. How do you prioritize, you know, those life safety issues over the the signs? I mean, what is, what should that prioritization look like to make sure that we're meeting your expectations and the expectations of the community? So the the moving on to the police requests, you will recall probably from the the creation of the biennial budget, there had been a couple of So the moving on to the police requests, you will recall probably from the the creation of the biennial budget, there had been a couple of positions for officers on there for 25 and 26. Those were not filled, but what this does is working with the chief and his his team of looking at setting the framework and beginning sort of a kind of a restructuring of the department to be able to meet the really that span of control that is necessary as we go into the future and continue to have our community grow. And we'll need additional officers to provide those services. This begins to create that framework, especially as a department is looking at potentially entertaining other schedule structures. In doing that, you need to make sure that we actually have the supervisory capability with each one of those shifts. And that is extremely important because that is when you have it, if something happens, you need to make sure that you have that senior individual as a sergeant on a shift to be able to respond and support those officers who are responding to something. Yes.
Yeah, just with the sergeant position, the the more detailed sheet. I wasn't sure from the language of it because it said it was about referring to an officer position. So I just wanted to make sure we're not, are we reducing patrol in creating this position or this would be or patrols, the numbers of patrol stay static. This is just it.
So the, there's no new FTEs. So what we would do is with the current amount of FTEs we have, two patrol officers would fill, be promoted to sergeant. So we would have six sergeants, one for every shift. And then we have the infrastructure to support our request for more staff in the five year picture. So their span of control would would be less at at right now, but it's can sustain growth.
Okay, that's not, I know before you, when your numbers were lower, you had, it it hurt you with scheduling and more overtime and all that.
Yep.
This is, this is okay with that. That's not gonna.
Yeah, because what we've taken away is a lot of the administrative work would go to that lieutenant position. The sergeants are road sergeants. They've been functioning more in that capacity now. A six sergeant gives them even more ability to be on the road, take the administrative work to the lieutenant, and they're still operating as patrol. Gary, thank you, Mayor. Chief, I I was a little surprised to see a couple of things here. One, I I, you know, it wasn't too long ago that we were eliminating lieutenants' positions and to have more sergeants. And but and as I read the advanced packet, it it, correct me if I'm wrong, and I guess I'm just looking for a little amplification. The, what we found in that experiment or that that change was we, it wasn't working to have everybody at the same rank of sergeant and we're finding that we really still do need, there's a role for lieutenant. Can you can you talk a little bit about that, Chief? That'd be helpful.
Yeah, that's, that's very helpful for compliance. So especially with accreditation, which we re-accredit in 2027. Our accreditation manager carries the administrative load, but there are requirements that have to be met, and it it's a chain of command issue. When we have a lieutenant, it helps us to to gain that mandatory compliance from sergeants in an easier way. When it's a peer to peer relationship, sometimes that's more difficult. So it does, we have found that the work that a lieutenant can do in the chain of command augments our ability to gain compliance and be more efficient.
Thank you.
So the two are reclasses because of workload, et cetera. And then the last one is brown bear increase the rates. So and the the program that we used to have doesn't exist anymore. So if anyone's gone through there, I mean, like my berry best is like a third more than it was before. So it's crazy.
Clean freak up by, you know, Walmart is cheaper. I go there. It's like.
Not that we're endorsing any particular business locally.
Oh, no.
So we have a fleet's wash service is the last one there. And then other than that, I think the the last thing that I really want to leave you with is that the next biennial budget starts very shortly. And my hope is at the the council retreat in January that we really take the opportunity to step back and help, I mean, council have the conversation of what are those those values? What are those those priorities that you have? Because then that sets the framework for your leaders to be able to create the next biennial budget as we sort of incorporate all of the the regulatory documents that we have, whether it's complan, CIPs, et cetera. Do a certain scrubbing of revenues, et cetera, of what we can actually do as we move forward. But more importantly, that we're not looking at just one, two years, we are looking at least that four or five years out. Because it does, none of it happens in isolation. So.
You gotta look four or five years out when you're doing the kind of capital planning that we're doing. I mean, things like the perk. The, you know, Nordic cottages, we didn't, you know, even the Noel Road quarters, those are multi-year projects that go over that bar exceed a biennial budget. My two cents, it's not going to be my budget, but I just wanted to throw that out there. Okay, go ahead, Ed.
Thanks. Becky, actually, I have a question for you. I find this approach on the general fund strategic long term planning startlingly different, but unique, and I find aspects of it very attractive. However, a question for Becky is when we're presented so much all at once, it almost strikes me like what we used to call on Wall Street, an all or nothing ticket. That that was a way of submitting a stock order, all or nothing. Let me finish, please. I noticed on a couple of the questions you indicated to Rob, keep rolling, keep rolling. So I'm wondering what your thought is? If we have a question or want to look at one of the line items.
Budget.
Pardon?
This isn't my budget. Okay, this is your budget. Okay. It's not mine. I'm out of here.
No, but that's still not my question. I mean, we're all in here together right now. If we have a question, do you want us to meet with Rob individually? Does that hold up the process? What's the timeframe on approving this?
Yeah, you need to be meet with Rob and you need to, you know, do your thing. But yeah, this is, I'm I'm backing away from this. This is what I have to do. I have to back away. This is for you guys.
And so we have the opportunity. So next Wednesday is when we'll come back with sort of additional revenue numbers that will help the the conversation. Our three column approach that has been historically used. But I am, I'll make myself available to anybody that has questions between now and then.
So would it be helpful? If I, for example, wanted to prioritize this list for myself. You know, I had like a set of my own criteria that I'd want to look at, like mandated, cost savings, liability to the city, like those sort of things. Would that be feasible to look over those and sort those based on that? Or is that too much work?
We could talk.
Yeah, just, just take a look at it.
Great.
I'll send some questions.
Just one comment, the slide deck that we have on our website was truncated about 15 to 20% on each slide. So we couldn't see the bottom of your slides.
I think what happens is when they they convert it.
Don't care how it happened. Just if we're, if we're, would like us to do what Doug said, look at them. If we could get a clean copy.
Yeah, I'll send you the, yeah, cool. PDF of the PowerPoint or something. I don't know what happens.
We we didn't, yeah, we didn't realize it until we pulled it up tonight. So, yeah. So no, definitely.
But wait, there's more.
One, one more thing. I I don't mean to sound like the Grinch, but given the escalating cost estimates of replacing the boardwalk, I do not think we should assume that we should replace the boardwalk. And I think it's worthy of further counseling before we get too far in that direction.
With that, I'm going to invite folks up to take on the the CIP.
All right, guys. So so well, well done. Very good. So and I encourage you to get with Rob, get with Debbie and and ask your questions. That's the best way to go about this. Okay, so now what are we doing? Are we doing the legislative agenda?
The the CIP.
CIP, okay.
It's all part of that item D.
Oh, here it is.
So one element of the annual budget process is to present our six year CIP. Each year we do that, and we have tonight both Josh, our city engineer, and Charlie, our utility engineer, to present the majority of the CIP. I want to let you know that Jeff is at a conference, and so we will present parks as well tonight. And these are projects that council and citizens have been presented multiple times. The CIP doesn't change in the blink of an eye. And so we'll go through this fairly quickly as more of a reminder than a deep dive into each and every project. But if you want to go to the next slide, just to give you an overview, we'll go through parks, general facilities, we will have a reminder about streets, which is our neighborhood streets. And then we'll go through each of the enterprise funds and transportation with a quick presentation on our capital improvement plan, which is also known as the CIP.
Okay, so Diane mentioned Jeff's not here. I don't carry the same enthusiasm as Jeff, so I'll do the best I can to convey his parks projects. So this is just a quick look at our next six years, and I'll just run through these really quick and mention them. I'm happy to answer any questions that I can, or Jeff can come back later and talk to those as well. So now we have the Edwards Park Project, the Mo Street Park, which is right behind us. You'll see a picture of that here in a minute. The Lions Park restroom replacement, the Oyster Plant Park, a peer repair. The Muriel Iverson Williams Waterfront Park, which has currently been working on. The Parks and Rec Building, some repairs on the building. And then the Play For All Rob Park expansion, the next phase of that park, and then the waterfront boardwalk. And just to clarify that, it it is not a replacement, it's just a repair and increasing the life of the waterfront boardwalk. And then there's the Rotary Memorial Community Park that we are working on right now and and close to wrapping up. As well as I'll mention the land acquisition for the Fourth Avenue Housing Kitsepp that was recently discussed. So we talked a little bit about the perk tonight, so I won't talk too much, but total cost of 17.2 million dollars with construction slated starting next spring. I don't know if there's anything else Diane, you want to add to that, but we'll keep rolling. Here's just a highlight of the Oyster Plant Park. Expected to extend the life of it. It needs some aisle repairs, so we're going to look at wrapping those piles. So we're working on permitting right now in design with the goal of constructing that next summer during the fish window for our permitting requirements. Here's the Most Street Trail just right behind us. Jeff's looking to improve this area and make it a little bit more accessible getting down the hill, as well as creating some little pocket areas for maybe some picnic tables or benches or something like that to take advantage of some of the views there with a goal of having construction done in 2027. And then here's the Recreation Center, and this is just some building repairs to the roof and the envelope. Looking at 2026 for those, that's been some ongoing work there. And there's been work happening already on the wayfinding and park signage. So this will be a continuation of that and looking really at the wayfinding and implementing those signs for the parks. And then we're going to move on to general facilities, and I think Diane will speak a little bit more to these.
General facilities, we've got our Public Works project. The Nordic cottages, the perk, and the Rob Park caretaker residence. So just a reminder mainly to citizens, we're seeking to build a public works facility, which is mainly a mechanic shop and then storage for vehicle and vehicles and equipment. And that is on Viking Avenue. That's a project that's been underway for some time. Ultimately, the goal would be a 2027, 28 construction if we start design next year. This project is complete. We can celebrate the moment and go to the next slide. This is a project that I mentioned earlier tonight. We are seeking to build one of the tiny homes or ADUs on our Rob Park site, and that would be for a caretaker and intended actually to be affordable place for someone to live and and work. Streets, just really quick, this is in the Neighborhood Streets Program that Mike Len manages. It's not technically capitalized because more on the maintenance side, but if you go to the next slide, you can see the projects or areas that we did in 2025. And I think the next slide shows what we have in mind for 2026. Mike will give a more detailed presentation on this later this year.
Also moving on to the water utility. About a $13 million capital program over the next six years. All these projects were identified and kind of prioritized in the Water Comprehensive Plan. Just really quickly, some the 340 fire zones, just to get some different pressure near Fourth Avenue near the tanks. The Third Avenue Water is part of the Third Avenue project that Josh is working on as part of the transportation. We're going to run water down there. The Caldart Main Project is to replace the last little portion of asbestos concrete made in the city with ductile iron. That is from Host Mark up to Rob Park on Caldart Avenue. The Front Street Water Main Replacement Project is on Front Street. It's to replace very old cast iron water main with new ductile iron. That'll be coordinated with the Streets Project and is probably worthy of a full conversation in itself. The Host Mark Pipe SR305 is for some redundancy to bring our water across 305 at Host Mark with a slightly larger pipe. It's pretty far out there. The Old Town Water Main Replacement is focused in the Old Town area, Pauls Bow, Sixth Avenue, Somerset, Ryan Street, that kind of area. There's a bunch of old water main that is in need of replacement. The Rob Park Tank is adding an additional storage tank up at Rob Park for additional capacity. The well VFD upgrades is something we're moving forward with here shortly, and that'll add VFDs that allow more control in all of our well sites. Electrical improvements primarily. Then the Noel Road Water Improvement Project is related to the Noel Road Project that's going on with the transportation up on Languenet. So up at Rob Park, we're adding a second storage tank, which will allow some redundancy. We'll be able to take the tank that was built in the 60s offline and do some maintenance and repair and restoration to it. That's being coordinated with the Caldart Water Main Project, and our goal is to advertise later this winter for construction next year. The, just the list of the kind of projects that we just went over. Moving on to sewer, not going to run through all these projects. The majority of them are Kitsepp County projects that we are on the hook for. The big one that we already talked about tonight is the SR305 Force Main. Our hope is to move into construction. Should actually say 2027, not 2026. The big Kitsepp County Project is the Solids and Liquids Hall Waste Project, which is the our share of that project's about 24-ish million dollars. It's the big Kitsepp County Treatment Plant Project Upgrade, and we did just recently receive Public Works Board $10 million loan for that. So that's a huge help in funding that project. But do you have anything to add? The county's in the midst of their process. It's not going as quickly as they would like it to, I think. Or they, not going as quickly as they anticipated it. So that one, we're along for the ride. Up here, I just kind of put some numbers up here. We have about $7 million worth of projects in the city itself. We're responsible for about 26-ish million dollars of Kitsepp County projects. It's, we're relying on there, and they have some very expensive. It's we're relying on there and they have some very expensive projects. As far as stormwater goes, we have a capital program of about thirteen million dollars. These were identified through the Stormwater Comprehensive Plan. Currently, we're working on the Eighth Avenue Culvert. We're doing the design currently and kind of lining ourselves up for some potential funding for construction in twenty twenty seven. The funding grant or the grant funding opportunities open currently. And so we're working with our consultant to at least put an application in with hopes of finding that in the future. This is kind of a cleaner summary. We just completed the West Pauls boat or the West Nelson, sorry, the West Pauls West Stormwater retrofit park project at Nelson Park. Did that earlier this summer and we are success. We were successful with our grant application through Ecology for the South Fork Dogfish Creek retrofit. So that'll be coming to you guys in the near future. But we got about one point four million dollars from Ecology to to fund that project for construction, which is pretty cool. And that'll be next year's construction.
Great, thanks, Charlie. So we'll dive into the transportation real quick. So Third Avenue, we've talked about, we know that's going on in design. We have on our Fourth Avenue sidewalks, that's just a gap filler project. Our Eighth Avenue improvements, we did receive a grant to look at that alternatives intersection improvements analysis there. So we're working, we're just getting ready to start that and this will be the bigger discussion of how do we realign or improve that intersection. So we'll work towards selecting an alternative for that and with a future construction project. We definitely have some overlay needs within the city and there's a few on this list right now. So Tenth Avenue, Finn Hill and Host Mark are on our list. I know that's not all inclusive. There's definitely some more needs in the city, but these are on our six year list right now. We have our Front Street Restoration Project and this is from Lindvig to Sunset. And this is also some overlay, but also looking at some traffic calming and some pedestrian improvements through there. And then we have our downtown area that I I know Mr. Eckert's talked about and wanting to have some additional discussion on. But this is our front street improvements downtown. And then we have Messford Avenue. So up near the schools, we have an area that's missing some sidewalk. And so we're looking at doing an overlay and some sidewalk infill will likely be a safe routes to school candidate. So we'll be looking for some funding through that. And the great news is we're doing really well on the Knoll Road. We're getting close to having the corridor finished, so it's it's on our horizon. So we're we're happy to see the the light at the end of the tunnel.
Want to compliment the city on the on the project. I see the claims coming through and there's steady progress. So congratulations all the way around.
Thank you. So just to really highlight really quick, currently in construction is the Knoll North and and this is what we're building from Messford up to Lincoln. And you might see recently that we've paved the the Langenette section. So that's pretty exciting. Definitely already getting some users cutting through there. The road is open. We're it's really local traffic only, so be mindful it is still an active construction area. And then we really have done and completed most of the work down at the elementary school as part of the Safe Routes to School project down there. So that's pretty exciting. Landscaping just started going in down there last week, so. And this is just a quick picture I wanted to show you guys of looking north at the Messford intersection of what it was before and what it currently is. And you can see there on the right that the road is paved. We haven't paved the the shared use path and then here probably late December, early January, you'll start to see some of the roundabout take shape here.
I tend, I know Becky, you walk around a lot and I tend to get on my bicycle. That's a whole different view. That's very cool.
Yeah, it's going to be very, very cool when it's finished. Really is. When it's all landscapes and everything, it's just, it's absolutely beautiful.
We we've gotten a lot of great feedback once constructions started there and everybody's walking through there and seeing those improvements. So just to speak about Third Avenue improvements, we're really starting to pick this design back up and move it forward. So we will be coming back with some right away phase discussions with you because we will need some temporary construction easements. So we're trying to kick that phase off. So we'll be coming back to council with those needs as well. And we should be finding out here, I think in the next week or two, on how our application for TIB went for Third Avenue. But we've received some positive feedback, so we're hopeful for that. And I think our request was about one point seven five million dollars for this project. And so here's just a quick summary to show you what we're working on, what's next in our six years and then really what's on our list for past six years. And you can see the list is is quite extensive. And it's not all inclusive. We know there's more needs that are going to come up from from what council's priorities are as well as our citizens. So, yes.
Josh, thank you for the details. What's the ask? Are you asking us to review this for prioritization? Is this information only? Are we going to be voting on an update to the CIP? Just want to make sure I'm clear.
Yeah, so the the CIP is approved as part of the budget package and it goes into our comp plan that Nicole goes through the amendment process. It's it's part of that entire package.
So so if we have comments or concerns about prioritization, you want us to engage you offline? Or how would you like us? And when will this come back for approval?
I think you should engage with us offline on on that.
Okay, when when's it coming back for approval?
This does not come back for separate approval. It's implemented as part of the budget. So it the first two years are implemented. So is this goes forward in this manner?
So are we approving it the first first meeting in December, second meeting in December? Just trying to get timing here.
You're you're approving it in the, I believe it's the first meeting in December. And these figures from twenty five and twenty six will be built into that big budget approval. And then what also this whole CIP is part of your comprehensive plan amendment. So the CIP is imported into the capital facilities plan of the comp plan and when you approve that amendment.
And when does the comp plan amendment come towards us?
I don't, I believe they do it in January. I'm not sure of their timing anymore.
Just just.
Right.
You better get to us before Christmas.
If if you want this to change before the budget, I would reach out to.
Just trying to figure out it's coming. It's not coming back next week.
Correct.
All right. And so there's a budgetary component to us and then there's the inclusion in the comprehensive plan. The budgetary is in December, the update to the comp plans, January, early February.
So what I would say is if you have questions for engineering, you need to get to engineering probably within the next two weeks.
Trying to get. This came to us. There's a whole lot of information there to digest at eight twenty six at night, trying to figure out.
Yeah.
How to plan my.
Number. Yeah. Yeah, I would I would get with engineering the next two weeks. Yep.
Ah, mic on. The majority of the CIP or Capital Improvement Plan is already approved. It was approved last year and it hasn't changed significantly. So we're, anyway, the majority of it has already been approved. So right now we're operating under that approval. And then the final approval of the modifications actually happens when the comp plan is adopted. Because we can't do a project unless it's included in the comp plan.
Got it.
Yeah.
Understand that piece. I'm just trying to let me go back to the first thing. What's the ask, Josh, Diane? Is it a, is there a part of this that you want us to comment on?
I think I think it's just that this is part of the budget's activity. In other words, it's, you know, it is, it is basically your transportation, your physical infrastructure improvement for the city. And there will be fallouts into the budget. So that's why it's being presented.
Correct. It's information and so these are, these are inputted as part of the budget. So it's giving you information that these projects are in the budget.
Trying for clarity and thank you.
Question, whoa, we have you, Josh. On Third Avenue, are we still proceeding in terms of design and so forth with that road being able to be used either temporarily or permanently in the future? Should we want to make Front Street one way? Are we building that to that it could? Did we decide that that can accommodate that or where are we at with that?
Great, great question. I'm glad you asked that. So, yes, we are designing it to be compatible with that idea. And our goal right now is to come back in December and talk a little bit more globally about transportation in the city and some of the priorities as well as the downtown. So I suspect that the couplet idea, the one way front street will be part of that discussion.
Okay.
Also, there's there's some more discussion about additional one way changes down here that we'll be talking about as well. So, yes, we are designing.
Great, yeah. Obviously, at a minimum, when we do come to redevelop Front Street, we're going to need a place to route traffic to and so forth. So thank you for that update. I look forward to hearing more.
Yeah. And so just, you know, come come back to the question here as far as what is ask our? Like when we come back and we have the downtown discussion, we will be asking, well, what is your priority? Do we want to just do a a street build or do we want to do a signature project? And so that's where we'll be asking for some input on those types of project decisions.
So great presentation. Ninety percent of what I heard was, hey, this is for our information to set the foundation for further discussions. Is that fair?
Fair.
Okay, thanks.
Good. That was a lot of information, but it was very cool. Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Yes. So before council further consideration this evening and actually if if it's agreeable, it would come to your consent agenda next week. And that is the approval or adoption of your twenty twenty six legislative agenda priorities that were mirrored or basically taken from your twenty twenty five priorities and basically eliminating those items that had not or that had been accomplished and a little bit additional refinement specifically around the request of support for Western Washington University. I worked with Brian McConaughey, who basically informed me that their request to the legislature, because their their larger request did not get funded. They are asking for seven point three million dollars supplemental in the supplemental session to design a forty four thousand square foot building. And it also the the council that we received, given that it is the supplemental year, there's probably and given the financial situation that the state is in, capital requests are fairly small, but we didn't want to not have something in there and also put in a request for three hundred thousand dollars that would go towards the the boardwalk replacement specifically to help assist with that. And then added just a few other legislative ideas for consideration, just basically to to share with our delegation for things that they might be consider working on from feedback that I received over time. Okay. That's it for me. Thank you.
Guys, I'm I'm starting to get very tired here. So that was the questions and concerns of the council, future agenda items. Go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, so future agenda item. So we had the election there yesterday. Our advisory vote was on there. Results of that as of today was we sixty eight percent in favor of a ban. So I think I I would like to see that come onto our agenda.
What the advisory vote was for?
The ban of fireworks. So I would like to see that come onto our agenda as soon as possible so that we could give direction to the staff. The A or N A to do an ordinance for that ban with the goal of if we're going to pass it, that we have it in place before New Year's this year, which means then with the one year requirement for it to go to effect, it would be in effect before New Year's of twenty twenty six.
I think that's a reasonable request. The vote was pretty clear that, yeah, there was no doubt in how that went. So we'll we'll work with staff to.
Yeah, so knowing that it'll take time to draft the ordinance and all, I think we can discuss it as soon as possible so that we could give direction and then bring it back for vote.
Any other questions and concerns of the council? Okay. Continue public comment. Any public comment? We ran them off, okay? Mayor and council members' comments.
Just a quick comment. I sent an email to the council members on most and least regressive forms of and types of taxation that the city participates in. Just a fun little email.
Okay. Go ahead, Doug.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, and the second, second floor conference room, second floor conference room, and we're not making any decision, correct?
No decisions and probably only need ten minutes.
Okay, so can I entertain a motion that we will adjourn out of the executive session?
Move to adjourn now. Take everybody out.
I don't care. Do you want to just do here?
I I think as long as we, it's probably easier and cleaner if we just go to the second floor.
That way we can clean the remote. I entertain a motion, please, to say that we will go to the executive session for ten fifteen minutes.
Ten, ten minutes.
Ten minutes and then we will adjourn out of the executive session.
Show moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
So that would put us out adjourning at eight forty four.
Yes.